I would like to call this morning's regular county council meeting, April twenty four, two thousand and twenty five, open at nine thirty. We'd like to call it to order at nine thirty. And we will start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty six and Treaty eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language and culture. Just a quick note, I noticed yesterday and I wish I would have noticed, not later yesterday, but it was Administrative Professionals Day yesterday. So I just wanted to do a shout out and say thank you so very much for our administration, for all the hard work and dedication you do to serve this county. It was very much appreciated. I hope you had a great administrative professional day. We will start with two point one, which is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
Uh, I would add three point three, five point two.
Um, it just, well, we'll do that when I go through the next scenario. Just wondering if there's anything you'd like to add or delete. And if none, um, so then as, as per nine point eight of our procedural bylaw, uh, we will go around the room for council to decide what items they would like to debate. Um, what I have recorded so far, and I'll include your two, three point three as I heard it, two point one, three point three, four point one, four point two, four point three, five point two, six point one, six point two, seven point one, seven point two, eight point one A, eight point two, and twelve point one. I can run through those again for, if you'd like. Okay, I'll run through those one more time.
Also add ten point one W.
Ten point one A?
W.
W. Ten point one W, okay.
Counsel Anderson? Like to add five point one, please.
Five point one.
Madam Chair, can we just acknowledge that there's a spelling mistake in three one and it'll be corrected when we republish the agendas?
Oh, yes.
So
Thank you.
We don't need a motion. We'll just correct a spelling mistake.
Okay, thank you. Just a typo there. Alrighty. I can run through these again if, unless anybody else has anything further they would like to add. All right, we'll run through these. Um, two, go ahead.
Sorry, can we discuss seven point five too?
Seven point five, yeah.
May have some extra questions after the presentation.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And then as we do have that delegation, we should discuss seven point four.
Seven point four. Okay. So everybody else, we're okay. Counselor Capitania, good morning. You're okay there? Okay. We will run through these again, two point one, three point three, four point one, four point two, four point three, five point one, five point two, six point one, six point two, seven point one, seven point two, seven point four, seven point five, eight point one A, eight point two, ten point one W, and twelve point one. Everybody's good to go? Alrighty. And so we will look at three point three, page thirteen of your agenda package.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Or as as amended or as presented? As presented, okay. Counselor Cromwell has made a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? That would be nine and oh. And we move to, of course, our delegations will not start until ten AM. So we will move directly to five point one, which is on page forty four of your agenda package.
Three point three.
I'm sorry?
Three point three was added.
Oh. I'm so sorry. I thought. Thank you. I'm jumping ahead, of course, thinking we're only discussing three point three. I, was that not the one that you had, were referring to that we just did the motion on was three point three?
No, I was.
The approval of the agenda. Thank you very much. Pardon me. Ah, we'll start again here. Approval of the minutes, three point three. And that's on page thirteen of your agenda package. Counselor Hall?
I, I had added that to request that resolutions twenty, CC twenty five two ten and twenty five two eleven be deemed invalid, given that they did not meet the requirements of the procedural bylaw. Twenty five two ten is in fact identical to the original motion of twenty five two oh nine before it was amended by two oh eight. And had anyone wanted to pass the original presentation of that bylaw, uh, without the proposed amendments, we should have defeated twenty five two oh eight. Basically, if there had been no amendments or none had been approved, the motion proposed by Councilmen's that was defeated is identical to the subsequent motion proposed after lunch by Counsel Cromwell. Um, the applicable section of the procedural bylaws, thirteen point five, which is that no discussion of a question that has been decided shall be allowed until after a motion for reconsideration has been carried. And such motion requires a two thirds vote.
Okay, thank you. Um, if I may weigh in, um, I understand you're saying, you are saying it didn't follow procedure and that twenty five oh nine was the same. I'm sorry, as which?
Two ten.
Same as two oh eight?
Same as two ten.
As two ten. Um.
So the unamended version, the original motion proposed by Counselor Minz was to, as called by the chair, was, uh, identical to twenty five two ten. And, um, and then it was subsequently amended, but the original motions, it's the same motion coming to the table twice. And that's, that's not allowed without that vote for reconsideration, which we just need to tap.
I actually disagree, um, because the twenty five two oh nine resolution was a first reading as amended. And twenty five ten, which failed, and twenty five ten was a first reading as presented. So that's very much different. Um, as well as when you refer to thirteen point five in a procedural bylaw, that's under the motions section. Um, and when you mentioned, uh, we can discuss it later on, I guess, in, in there. But what that means is, um, uh, let me just pull it open. I think actually I have it here. Thirteen point five. So when you mention thirteen point five, it refers to reconsideration of a question that has been decided. Um, first reading isn't the same as a first question, um, as the question decided, because a question decided means that something actually has to be formal and complete, and that doesn't happen until third reading. Bylaw section is under tw- the section twelve of the procedural bylaw, and they're separated because motions and bylaws are different. And so I have to disagree, um, that there was an error made and that everything was done according to uh, several legislations such as the MGA. We followed the procedural bylaw. We followed Robert's Rules of Order. We make sure that the municipal affairs, basic principles of bylaw, um, is, is, uh, addressed as well as our CAO's advice given at the meeting at the time. So I would disagree.
I think if you were to check with municipal affairs, once a bylaw has been defeated, it's, um, to quote them, dead. And you need to start from scratch. This. So it's up to council to decide which way they want to go, but, um, I, I think that it's undeniable that the two motions in effect and content are, are identical in what, what's trying to happen there.
Actually, uh, again, they were very different, and the bylaw isn't dead at first reading. It's a first reading. It would be dead at the second and third reading, which is covered under twelve point four or five of our, of our procedural bylaw. It's only when we rescind a bylaw according to section twelve. Um, if, uh, second and third reading fails. First reading did not, uh, fail. However, uh, according to what I'm understanding, uh, as well through municipal affairs and, uh, everything that we've read and the MGA, et cetera, et cetera, that you can put as many first readings forward as you can during the time allotment that you have. Because that is there for discussion. It's not killing a bylaw. That would kill the bylaw at second and third reading. If that failed there, then. Is there a further discussion?
Sorry, for clarification, Counselor Hall, were you putting that motion on the table to amend the minutes?
Yes, specifically, I was.
So is the motion on the floor for us to vote on, or is the chair just unilaterally making a decision?
I'm sorry, is the chair what?
Unilaterally making the decision for us.
Um, I, I wouldn't say unilaterally. No, I'm, I'm having the conversation with regards to what the motion was, was to make the amendment and, and the conversation that took place was a discussion.
So is the motion on the floor for us to vote on?
The motion on the floor is to amend as he had recommended. I asked if there was any further discussion.
Thank you. As we are definitely allowed to talk on motions and amendments. Uh, they were very different and we are following our procedural bylaw. It is unfortunate that gonna have to word this very carefully. I'm not.
You're okay there? All right. For, uh, the purposes of everyone understanding what the motion is, would you please like to read that again?
To approve the minutes as amended by striking out or acknowledging that twenty five two ten and twenty five two eleven are invalid, given that they did not follow the procedural bylaw.
Tammy, did you get that?
To approve the amendment, the minutes as amended by striking out CC twenty five two ten and CC twenty five two eleven, given that they did not follow the procedural bylaw.
So we will vote on the amendment?
Well, it's a single motion.
It's a single motion. All right. So we're going to vote on an amended minutes for the special meeting. As read by Counsel Hall, and if you wouldn't mind pa- passing that on to Tammy for her, um, to have it again. Pardon?
I don't have it written down, but she certainly is welcome to listen to the recording. I think it's been stated at least twice clearly.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's just much easier if they're, um, passed on in writing. That would be wonderful. So she doesn't have to go back and read that, uh, listen to that recording. All right. Is everybody ready for the vote? All those in favor of the amended special, uh, special meeting minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, and all those opposed? One, two, three, four, and five. That motion fails? Would anyone like to put a motion forward with regards to the special counsel, special county council meeting minutes as presented?
Still moved.
Counselor Cromwell? Is there any discussion? I'll just wait for Tammy. Yeah, be comfortable with that? All right. Is it all in favor? One, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six, all opposed? Eh. And three, six and three, that carries. Thank you. Alrighty. Organized here. Okay, because again, our delegation is not in for another seventeen minutes or so, we will move forward to, um, business arising from the minutes, section five of your agenda package, five point one, page forty four, North Skeleton Lake Community Association. The recommendation from Counsel Anderson was to put this on the, the agenda. If you'd like to go ahead?
Thank you. Um, I put this on the agenda because I don't believe that the recommendation is clear direction to administration. I think they're looking for clear direction, and I don't believe that the recommended motion, if we had just adopted it, would do that. So I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to add ten thousand dollars to the two thousand and twenty five budget for a solar light for the North Skeleton Lake Community Association.
Just wait for Tammy to have a, in case we need to that reread. Is there any discussion at this time, Counsel or, uh, Chamsen?
Uh, I think I'm gonna have to be in opposition of this. Is our, you know, we have conversations coming up with our level of service, and we have a lot of dangerous areas coming up and ten thousand dollars a pop. It's, uh, pretty hefty on the taxpayers.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to weigh in? Counselor Minz?
I, yeah, we, we we moved to, to help, help this, uh, society or delegation forward in a few different areas and, uh, and with the the way the motion was worded, I totally understand. Um, that it was un- unlegible, negative motion, I guess, that, that caught us off. But, uh, I do know we have. So we're gonna, we're gonna help them with, with, uh, signage. We're gonna help them with the, the bathroom elevation idea, and we're gonna help them, help. Administration is gonna help them try to actually lease a environmental reserve that I cannot see ever actually going forward, but we're gonna help them with that. So there's many boat launches in around, uh, uh, Athabasca County. I think we've got, what, twenty some boat launches and, and, uh, so do we put a solar light at every boat launch? Right now, we have a massive amount of of, uh, maintenance to do at these boat launches, let alone every place else that we have on recreation and to put another ten thousand dollar item out there that is going to require maintenance. Um, I think we need to clean up some of these areas before we start adding more on, so I, uh, I can't be, uh, in, in approval of this, of this motion myself. Not until we clean up some other places.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel, Capitani, my goodness, sorry about that. Counselor Capitani, go ahead, please.
Um, I just, uh, thought that this might be a good opportunity to point out that, um, when in our budget last year, we had given money to youth groups or youth centers, and we've, uh, recently are waiting to find out if one has, um, actually shut down and likely will have to return its five thousand dollars and or not get its five thousand in the next budget. That equals ten thousand dollars, and I think you could go to another group that not just services youth, but all, all ages of the community. That's all.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Counselor Cromwell?
Thank you. And Counsel Capitani made a very valid point. However, we do not have that information yet. And again, coming back, twenty twenty one boat launches, that's two hundred and ten thousand dollars to be equal and, and treat everybody fairly. Um, Counsel Chamsik nailed it. We're talking about that, our level of service, and right now not prepared to move it forward.
Thank you, Counsel Hall.
I think we have to acknowledge that we don't have a uniform level of everything across the entire county, and I, I don't buy that argument. I mean, we don't have pavement in all subdivisions. We don't have water and sewer in all subdivisions. But, um, I, I think the, we should, we should encourage and applaud community groups to take initiative and to do things. And so while, uh, I didn't hear the community group ask the county to pay for it, and I'm not excited about us, uh, paying for it, I do think that, um, you know, we should be still providing our support for them to install it. They've, uh, they, they didn't ask us for the, they didn't ask us for the money. They asked for permission. So I, I don't like the idea of paying, but I certainly could get behind us giving them permission to, uh, to enhance their neighborhood, and, uh, we should, we should again continue to encourage community to gather and, and make their region better.
Thank you. Um, I'll also weigh in on, on this one as well. Um, as, as much as I applaud the, the, uh, community group for wanting the betterment, of course, of their, um, area that they frequent quite regularly, we also have to consider what's happening, um, throughout our municipality. And when I consider that, I looked, um, at a couple of different areas. Like you mentioned, we have twenty one boat launches. We have five beaches. We have nine campgrounds. Uh, we have trails. We have all of this county infrastructure that requires maintenance. And yet we're not able, just due to the, um, current resources that we have, to fulfill that on a requirement, fulfill that requirement, uh, to a higher standard. And, um, I'm finding a, a perfect example that I'm referring to here is in Jackfish Lake. Um, due to the, uh, current resources that we have, the playground and the beach that are there, uh, are currently not able to receive regular maintenance. Um, they've fallen into disarray. Uh, people are complaining about that type of thing. Um, there used to be road tilling that took place to maintain those sandy areas, and now they're becoming overgrown. Um, the camp, uh, shelter, the building is not being maintained to a higher standard as well, just again, due to resources and time that we don't have. And, um, we are looking forward to a level of service. We are looking forward to, uh, you know, facilities and recreation outdoor space plans and that, uh, for our existing infrastructure. And without having all of that information first, I am hesitant to continually add infrastructure when we're, we're having a difficult time with what we currently have. So I would, for me, I would have to vote against it today, but definitely leave it in our list of items for our level of service so that we can review this when we review everything and figure out what the future plans are going to be and how we're going to be able to find the resources to maintain them all. So today I, I, I am having to, uh, made the decision to vote against, but to keep it, um, at the forefront for, for the discussion when we get to that level of service, um, discussion and our other plans. Go ahead.
Final word, if we're only going around once?
There is a final closing statement for sure. Counsel, uh, Capitaniuk? If I may.
Oh, I would just like to ask for a recorded vote on this after. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. If you'd like to put in a closing statement, for sure.
Thank you. Um, I just want to point out to this one, the community group came to us explaining all that they do for our community and the incredible steps that they've taken to try and improve this area and to make it welcoming for all. And they deemed that there was a safety risk and they wanted a light and, I mean, it does, it's not a, it's not a crazy request. They asked for something really seemingly simple. And the confusion here is caused by council uh, and this negative motion, and then the Reeve clarifying after the vote that because it was defeated, that meant the light was approved. Um, I've had a few people point that out to me, uh, when they've watched the live feed. And so I just think that while, yes, I understand we can't spend ten thousand dollars everywhere. This is one way that we can find it in our budget. We could address what they deem to be a safety risk at this area that they are using and maintaining and taking care of a lot. And it, it would just set it straight and without creating a bunch of hard feelings or anything, I think we could find the ten thousand dollars in our budget.
Thank you. Is there any further comment? That's a closing, that's a closing statement for sure.
I thought you said that was a closing state.
It was a closing statement. Yeah, for sure. Um, I know I would like to comment for sure. When you mentioned the Reeve had said, um, yes, uh, administration has also corrected.
Just as a point, my statement was a closing statement. I expect the vote to be called.
Yeah, point of information. All right, if we're all ready for the, um, the vote? All those in favor? One, two, three, four. So that would be Counsel Wallet, Counsel Hall,
Aye.
Counsel Anderson and Counsel, uh, Capitaniuk? And all those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. That would be Counsel Chamsik, Counsel Holland, Counsel Minz, Counsel Gerlock and Counsel Cromwell.
Madam Chair? Could I make a motion that, uh, the county provide approval to the community group to install a light to be paid for and maintained by the group? I think, you know, we've said we don't want to fund it. Um, I think it's, you know, twenty one boat launches are not asking for stuff from us. We've got one community group doing it. And we've, we've got precedent for doing this before when a community group raises, uh, puts the work in. And, and again, at the risk of repeating myself, I think we owe it to community groups to, uh, enable and support when they've taken initiative. And so again, the motion would be to provide approval for the community group to install a light to be paid for and maintained by the group, and that addresses all the maintenance concerns that have come up in the discussion so far.
Thank you. I think for, for, um, this situation and being that this is something that would require an agreement, um, because I believe that would be on municipal land, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, CAO, would that light be installed on municipal land?
Uh, there's only three pieces of land down there. There's the road allowance, uh, which is um, under care and control of the county, uh, environmental reserve, which is owned by the county, and then provincial land. So, um, those are the choices.
Okay. So being that there would have to, um, be an agreement, uh, created for that, I would like to table that, uh, motion um, and that discussion for, uh, uh, committee of the whole meeting coming up, uh, future committee of the whole, so that we could consider what an agreement would look like for that? Is that fair? Counsel, there, there is no debate on a table, but.
Can it be stipulated to be done next committee of the whole meeting? I don't want to string this along. Okay, I think we should provide some predictability of when it's gonna come up for the community group.
Understood. I would put that back to CAO to ask how much time that they have to put that together for the next committee of the whole.
Madam Chair, we can have something ready for the next committee of the whole meeting.
Okay. If that's fair, we'll table it to the next committee of the whole. Is the tabling motion? Can't remember. Is it two thirds? Or simple? Just give me a second here until I double check. No, it's a simple majority. So simple majority, um, if we would like to have, go ahead for that tabling motion for the next committee of the whole meeting? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, six, on any opposed? One, two,
A.
Three, six and three. Thank you. And we have about five minutes before our next um, delegate, get delegation is here, and I believe probably five point two will take some more discussion um, that would run into creating our delegation to be late start. So I think what we'll do is take a recess at this time, uh, which is nine fifty seven. So we'll take about a three or four minute recess, four minute recess, and then we'll, uh, have our delegation seated. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome back, everybody. We are at the uh, delegation portion of our agenda, uh, which is four point one. It's with regards to a fire invoice and I believe we have Sherman Doroshenko with us here today. Thank you very much for being here. Um, we will start with introductions around the table. We can start here.
Uh, Rob Minz, Division Eight, Baptist Lake Island, Lake Area.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, as Division One, Bachelorette, Peril Area.
Good morning, welcome Gary Cromwell, Division Six, Far North, Up Two and Putting Three Out, Wandering River, Fallujah Area. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Division, uh, Camille Walk, Division Nine, North of the River.
Kelly Chamsik, Division Seven, Grassland, Atmore, Prospita Areas.
Good morning, Brian Hall. I live in Division Four.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Caslin Boyle Area.
Thank you very much. We also have Counselor Capitania. She is from Division Two, which is the Colleton, Minook, Pine Creek area. She will be visiting with us on Zoom. Here this morning, I am Tracy Hall in Division Five, which is west or east, pardon me, east of Athabasca. So that would be Parkview, uh, Parkview, Amber Valley, um, all of those Paxton areas in, in that area. Also the Reed for the county. Uh, we also have with us our secretary, uh, recording secretary, Tammy Plord. Our CAO, Mr. Bob Beck, our um, communications manager, Jordan Schenkelberg. Behind you, we have our uh, info. There we go, Director of Corporate Services, Shadi Ambley, uh, Crystal Wilkinson. I can never remember your title. Director. Thank you very much. And we have our, our press with us, Cole Brennan. If you'd like to go ahead and introduce yourself and then begin your presentation, that would be great. Thank you. Use your microphone. Thank you so much.
I am Sherman Doroshenko.
And I'm Rosemary Delorme.
This is my sister.
Perfect. Thank you so much for being here and welcome. Please go ahead.
Okay, um. On February eighth, I lit a bail on fire and the snow was. You know, uh, knee deep. And there was a lot of snow surrounding everything. I checked with the uh, website. And the county uh, of Athabasca. I followed the guidelines that there was, I didn't need a permit from October to March first. So I thought it was safe. And so I let this smoke, it all bail on fire. And it's just smoldered away and there's like four feet of snow all the way around. Um, this bail and no concerns of fire getting away of at that time. So February eighth, then following weekend, I came out, the bail burnt. There was nothing. There was no smoke, no fire. Uh, it was clear, second week, same thing. Then it came to March sixth. When the uh, I got a call in the city, I believe it was March sixth. And that, but the farm was on fire. And I didn't realize that that bail would have taken off. After three weeks, four weeks of sitting in the snow and then as. Weather was permitting to get drier, more grass was visible. And it followed the fence line and started a fire from that spot, I believe it was. So I rushed out from the city. I came out and well, the neighbor notified me. He's the one that called the fire department. I wasn't sure if I should or not, but I says first, you know. If it's going to go anywhere, he said, I don't think so, but I, he said he was going to call the fire department anyways. So the fire department, fire department was called. Um, I caught there an hour later. And basically everything was out. And I spoke with um, Travis. Uh, Fire Marshal, I believe it was, um. Told him I was the owner, or not the owner, but my father owns the property. I'm on, on the land title also. And my sister is also a part of the family. It's a family, family uh, farm. It uh. The fire wasn't intentionally lit. It was, I thought I was in the safe, safe zone, but. The website has some false information on it and, but now it's changed. Since uh, the fire has been on, you know, uh, been done. So I just don't feel that I was in the wrong. I know accidents happen, but I don't know if it was an accident. I let a bail, thought it's just going to burn and disappear and with, with the weather, you know, melting snow and I guess apparently it went into the ground. And I just want. And then I got this bill from you guys and I was talking to Travis and he says it, it shouldn't be that much. He says, we're overkill on the um, fire trucks and all the equipment here. He says, you won't be charged for everything. But he says it probably charged you with one truck or two trucks, couple thousand dollars or just water, water, a pay a water bill. So then when I got the bill and I was shocked, I was shocked about the fire. I was shocked about the bill. My dad shocked about it. He's, he said he's paying taxes on the farm for many, many years and. I don't know if taxes, that's what our tax money goes to or not. I don't know. So. We're a small family. We're coping with my parents at the lodge. We're paying help them pay. To, for them to stay there. They don't have any money. My sister's helping a lot. I'm helping a lot. And um, we're just having tough times. With our own bills, insurances, house insurances and all that stuff. So I'd just like some compensation.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything that you would like to?
And no, we pretty well covered it all. It's just like I said, it, it was an accident. If unforeseen, like no one would expect it. We didn't want it to happen. We just lost the, the barns. They were old barns. They were like. Third generation barns. They um, meant more to me as I always took pictures of them. They made beautiful pictures, family pictures, everything like that. Now. It's, there's nothing there, so.
Yeah, we just got previous pictures and you can see all the snow around the building. You wouldn't think they would burn, but. Was just lucky we still have the house.
Yeah.
And we still pay the bills at the house, heating, power, and that's not easy for my parents either.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the information you provided for us here today. Is there any questions of counsel that they have? Go ahead, Counselor Hall.
Thanks for uh, sharing, you know, and, and coming in to speak with us. I just, I had two questions. I guess for clarity, I think I heard you say you didn't get a permit.
No, I didn't get no permit. I read on the county website. And I read on there that from October to March first, the permit was not required.
And so then you, you said there was false information on the website. Can, is that what you're referring to or just can you help us kind of fill that, that blank? What false information was there, just so we understand?
Um, somebody called me from the county and went over. Uh, that I told him the same story. And I told him I went on the county uh, website and he went on there and he says, cause he was going to get issued me some tickets. So he says, yes, Sherman, he says, this is false information on here. He says, I can't give you tickets. So he dropped the tickets. About a thousand dollars, I believe it was.
Um, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cuomo.
Thank you. Uh, do you remember who that was you spoke to?
Jason Oly.
Okay, follow up?
Sorry, follow up, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, he said he uh, he, he would take, take care of everything on his end. And which I believe he did, because I never got no fines or tickets. He says the tickets will be in the mist. Cause he says, what I read on here too, on the website is wrong. And. It wasn't clear. And then, and the fire in, within the fire protection area, I don't know, are we in the fire protection area or is it, we're out of the fire protection area?
That was actually something I was going to ask you if you knew you were in the fire protection area or not.
I didn't think we were, but he said we're five kilometers from the fire protection area. I don't know if, if we're in it or out of it. I'm not sure.
Go ahead, please.
I uh, I can, I can guarantee you that you're in what we call the white zone. Which isn't in the fire protection. It's in actually the Athabasca County Fire Protection Area.
Pardon me?
It's in the Athabasca County Fire Protection Area.
Right.
The, the green zone is to the west of, of uh, where your mom and dad's place is.
Right.
To the west of you. It's down eight twelve.
Right.
On the west side of eight twelve.
So that is the fire protection area on that side?
Yeah.
So we're not in it?
You're in, in what we call the white zone, which is, which is Athabasca County Fire Protection Area.
So what I went by was that the dates on the website, October to March first.
Yeah, which is, which is for the fire protection area. Which is the green zone.
Right.
Which is on the west side of eight twelve.
Right.
Uh, in the county side, in the, in the white zone. County Fire Protection Area is a fire permit. Uh, twelve months of the year.
Right.
If you want to light a fire, you, you need to get a fire permit.
So need a fire permit all year round in my area.
Yeah, you betcha.
If I would have known, I would have got it, could have been safe, but still. A fire permit is not going to, uh, you know, prevent a fire, you know, going, but it would have been nice, you know. But we will now get a fire permit regardless.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, my follow up that I had on deck, if I may.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. Though I appreciate the, the communication and the information coming out. Uh, if I can direct to administration. Uh, just for that point on information on our websites. That indicated fire permits are not required. I know that's not directly relevant to what we're discussing right now, but a bit of a concern. Uh, was there information incorrect on our website that has been changed after the fact?
It has been changed after.
So I, thank you. And I'm, I'm just asking our administration about that, uh, because that is a.
Ma- Madam Chair, we'd have to research. Uh, I, this is first I've heard of it, so. I don't take a screenshot of our website every day, so I'm not aware, but we'd have to research.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I realize that and I thank you.
Yeah, we can, we can have that conversation upcoming after the delegation. Do you have any questions, any further questions? You're okay? All right. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair to the delegation. Uh, is the property insured?
Yeah. The, the houses, these, these were old buildings that went, yeah.
The host.
Our big concern was receiving a bill for over, well, almost up five thousand dollars.
And follow up? And just as a follow up, um, on the aerial imagery, it looks like some of the older buildings may have been on the road allowance and some. On the private property and just to confirm, the buildings that burnt were on private property. They weren't on road allowance. Okay, I'm gonna, thank you.
Thanks very much, um.
Yeah, those buildings were there since probably nineteen hundreds.
Yeah.
Okay. Appreciate that. Uh, and just sort of, you mentioned you had insurance. Did that have your uh, fire fighting clause in your insurance?
We never even approached fire insurance on because I mean, they were old buildings. Um, it, it, there was no, there was nothing in them. They were barns. There were three barns that went.
Thank you, um, Counselor Gerlock.
Yeah, if, if the residence is insured and there's a fire in the yard, does, is there not coverage? For other buildings and property, like not to replace it, but just.
I'm not sure.
Covering the cost of.
I, I, I would think so, but my sister looks after that, at the uh, with my parents. And she's basically got the house insured.
I think it's just the house and the, and the contents of, of the house that's insured because.
I think it's usually a clause in.
Yeah.
In, in the contracts that, because if a fire is threatening.
Yeah.
Your house, uh, the fire department comes out, the fire, your insurance covers that because it is threatening, that's it. It, it's not intended to, so your insurance may cover. A portion of this.
Thank you. Go ahead, please, Counselor.
So just follow up to Counselor Gerlock, have you given that bill to your insurance company and?
No, no.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who has questions of our delegation here today? Well, it looks like counsel is um, doesn't have anything further to, to ask you about. And I just want to say thank you very much for being here today. I'm sorry for your loss. I know how devastating that.
Well, it's, it's. We, we were talking about cleaning the yard out, but we didn't want to clean it up this way. It was, it was a totally, totally. Accident. Like I said, it was nothing for three weeks. And all of a sudden, because I was there Sunday and I always do a walk around, because there's nobody there. Well, we don't want everybody to know that, but. Um, there's nobody there. I left Sunday evening. I did a perimeter check. All, everything's locked and I always make two trips. I make one this way and I'm like, I go back. And I went to that place and there was no sign of nothing. I mean, it was a beautiful day on Sunday. And then as the week progressed. It, more grass got visible and then it got a little bit windy here, so something got some air underneath. Um, the bail and that, where that bail started, we did feed cattle at that point, so there was a little bit of manure, so. It was probably in the manure underneath the ground and that's where. It started and I was talking to Travis. He said, if I had any idea of where the fire started, I says. Come with me, I'll show you what I did. And sure enough, it was still smoldering where they haven't been. Put out the, you know, the main foot, the fire, you know, there's still.
They had the heat sensor.
Yeah, they had the heat sensor. It was still smoldering there. And my neighbor, I was doing uh, half a mile to the west of ours, about a mile, I guess. Little three quarters of mile was doing their chores and all of a sudden seen. The smoke and then found uh, um, his Austin, his, her wife, her husband. He was coming from Fox Creek and he was by the corner and he says, oh. Rush over there and he says from Maraz's Hill. I don't know if you know Maraz's Hill, Jackson's Hill. He says, yes, there's something going on. He said, I'll step on it and go over there. So he's the one, um, he called me. And I said, no, I'm in the city. I says, I'm just going to sit down and have supper. So this was a shock. And uh, so I just left everything on the table and jumped in the car and. Took me an hour to get here.
Understood. No, I, I understand.
I know, it, it, they said, don't rush, but it took me an hour. Usually takes me an hour and a half, but it took me an hour. But everything was out. It was just smoldering and Travis, I talked to Travis, had a nice conversation with him. And he said, it shouldn't be too bad. He said, I did the overkill on all the trucks here. But he says, you won't be getting charged with all of it, but he says maybe just a water bill. I do one truck. And so then I got this bill. It was a shock.
Okay.
So what, what exactly does the county charge for then? Like, like we've got this five thousand dollar bill?
Well, there is a, there's a breakdown here. So yeah, I guess Athabasca was called, yeah, Colleton was called. So one, one truck would have been plenty, you know, just to make sure the fire didn't get away.
Well, and, and like you mentioned earlier, fire is unpredictable.
Yeah, exactly.
And so it's better to um, be very well prepared rather than not. So um, I'm very happy that we have the. The volunteers that we do that are able to respond as quickly as they are, so that, that, that's the basic.
They're, they're, what do you, to serve and protect, you know, like, exactly. That's what I thought the fire department is there, police department. I guess there was police there, there was ambulances there and there was fire trucks and it was just like. Fourth of July or Christmas time, I guess. And when I came there, they were sitting at the road and sitting in there, sitting at my cabin and then, you know, there. It was all over the place and he. My neighbor got actually kicked out of the yard. Get out of here, you know, we need room, you know? But I says, well, when I come there, they're not going to tell me to get out, but I drove to the house and there was no issues whatsoever. I walked right up to it and he's. Wondered, a guy said, go talk to uh, Travis. He's standing over there by the front post. I went over there. It was a good old time, you know, like.
Yeah.
Not a good old time, but a sad time.
Absolutely, sad time. I'm so glad they were able to save your house. That, you know, that, that's an amazing feat in its own, especially in the rural community. So that's fantastic.
Yeah.
That the response that they did provide was, you know, really did a lot. So I'm glad that that happened. And again, I'm very sorry for your loss. Um, it is devastating and I, I know wholeheartedly how that is. Um, I think at this time though, um, if counsel doesn't have any other uh, comments or concerns, this will be coming back. This will be coming back, so council will have an opportunity to have further discussion later in the day, um, I believe it's seven point four of our agenda. Um, you're welcome to stay, if you like, it will be quite a bit later on in the day, and we also have, uh, live streaming happening, it's also recorded. So you are able to go on to YouTube and, uh, have a look at, at that conversation if you choose not to stay today.
Yeah, no, we're gonna head back to the parents, the public to the farm, and then I gotta get back to work, I lost today's wages here. We'll be, I'm busy like heck.
Okay, well, I sure appreciate you being here today and, and, uh, giving us this information that you have, and, um, wish you well. So you, you will get back to us though? Absolutely, okay.
Like I said, you would want my dad here.
No. Well, I'm so glad that you're.
Give you, uh, a thousand and one excuses.
Yeah.
And it's, it's hard on him, I know he wanted to clean up the yard, but not in this way.
Yeah.
Um.
And the sentimental.
It's, and like, me and my sister talk, no, we're, we're gonna leave it, just let it collapse, you know, as we, you know, she's got thousands and thousands of pictures.
They, they, that's the only thing, like, we were there on the weekend for Easter, and the big black clouds were in, and I'm just like. But my barns aren't there to take pictures with the, with the clouds, like, it's just, it's different, but yeah.
Just lucky there was no animals in there, and, you know.
There was nothing of value in there, it's, it's just more for the sentimental.
Yeah.
Value.
And that Saturday I came out and I cleaned everything up by hand.
Oh, yeah, it is, they can clean up huge, absolutely. Yeah. Alrighty, well, thank you again for being here, and we wish you safe travels, and, and, uh, administration will be back in touch. Okay. Okay, thank you so very much. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, take care.
You too.
Um, folks, we have another delegation, um, at ten thirty, and I believe that's nine minutes from now. I, do we wanna try and ta- tackle the next item, or would you like to take a recess? Recession? Yeah. I think we'll go for a recess then, folks, uh, eight minutes, please, we'll, we'll reconvene at ten thirty for our next delegation.
Thank you so much. Welcome back, everybody. We are at our delegation four point two, which is the Matrix Group LLP, the audited financial statements. We have Jeff Alliston here with us here today. I know you know, everybody. I don't think we necessarily need to go through introductions again here today. Right? We can, you're good to go. Alrighty, so I will turn the floor over to you. Thank you again for being here.
Yeah, thanks again. Thanks for having me here today. Go over the twenty twenty four financial statements for for Athabasca County. So then, so usually to begin these presentations, I like to give a bit of an overview of an audit. So why we have an audit and the importance of it and really is to enhance the degree of confidence of the intended users of these financial statements. So these main users being yourselves as counselors, rate payers, the municipal affairs, province of Alberta. So those organizations with a vested interest in the financial performance of the county. This is achieved by us as auditors expressing opinion. So we're given an opinion that the financial statements are free from a material misstatement. So what that means is as auditors, we're seeking reasonable assurance. So it's a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute as we're not auditing every transaction that happened during the year. Also, as auditors, we exercise professional judgment, maintain professional skepticism. So question in mind, stay alert to conditions which may indicate possible misstatement. So areas such as cutoff, want to make sure that transactions have been recorded in the correct fiscal period. Revenue recognition, making sure revenue is being recognized when services or performance obligation been met. And as well as collectibility of accounts receivables, or are your receivables deemed to be collectible subsequent to your end? And then also a critical assessment of audit evidence. So has any evidence been altered? When it comes to your financial statements on the auditor's report on page three and four, we give our opinion at the top that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. In accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards, those are the same accounting standards that all government or entities report under across Canada. When it comes to the basis for opinion in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards. And that the responsibility of management and those charged with governance. So just a note there that those, you know, governance or council is responsible for the oversight of the financial reporting of the county. And then also auders responsibility for the audit, then the last part, which in turn summarizes our objective, which is, which is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. This next slide is a snapshot of where the county was at financially as at December thirty one, twenty twenty four. So you see your cash and temporary investment position was up to about forty two point six million. So what a seven million dollar increase year over year. So the county had generated positive cash flows from its operations about eleven point two million. And then spent about four point two million on capital asset additions. So kind of the result of the change in the cash. When it comes to taxes and grants in place of taxes. So here you'll see your current tax position was up to about eight hundred and twenty. You saw an increase in your arrears taxes up to one point six. So that contains various oil and gas companies that are in the arrears. This is starting to become more of a trend in the definitely in the in the counties near you and around you too. With the rear starting to creep up again as it did a few years ago. So just something to be mindful of. You do have an allowance for doubtful accounts. There have one point six million to kind of offset the arrears amounts or the linear amounts too, but just to make sure, you know, just be mindful of that when you're doing your taxes that obviously you're taxing these, you know, based on your assessment and the tax rules within the county, but you might not be collecting cash or just mindful that maybe the cash won't be coming in. So just something to to watch out going forward there. So I left you with a total counts receivable here are taxes about eight hundred and twenty five thousand at year end. Other receivables provincial and federal governments receivables of five point three million. You got a receivables from other governments. So in relation to the multiplex town Alberta transportation, regional waste. So there's a bunch in there for that. Goods and services tax of five hundred and seventy seven thousand still to be collected. So left you guys about seven million versus eight point six in the prior year. Prior year just had more grants receivable in relation to MSI capital. So that's why you're seeing the the decrease there in the provincial and federal receivables. Back to the statement of financial position, your final asset here is land held for resale. So were no land sales in the year. So that left you with an asset position about fifty million or one point or about sorry about a five million dollar increase year over year. When it comes to liabilities, so what the county still owed subsequent to your end, counts payable and accrued liabilities of three point seven million. Mainly mainly vendor trade payables. So that was down year over year. So just timing there. Deferred revenue of three point three million. So when it comes to deferred revenue, so these are grants or amounts that you've received to date still to be allocated to a projects going forward. So you have your twenty twenty four allocations when it comes to Canada Community Building Fund, local government fiscal framework, as well as your ACP funding for six hundred thousand. You had spent to recognize revenue in relation to bridge construction and culvert replacements. Motor graders replacement and as well as various bridge work when it comes to the step funding at the bottom there. So it left you with both three point three million still to be recognized in in future years. Other liabilities include your employee benefit obligation. So that's vacation and sick time accruals in relation to to staffing there. So that's down to four ninety five from seven thirteen in the prior year. When it comes to your asset retirement obligations here, so that's at seven point nine million. So again, this was kind of the adoption last year of this framework. So it's based on a present value technique. So in other words, it's discounted at a rate expectation in the future is that these assets will settle between the year twenty twenty five and twenty forty five. So as you move closer to retirement of these assets, you'll see that liability increase. And then as they retire, the those funds will be there to to support the retirement of those assets. That's kind of the idea behind the asset retirement obligations. And then contaminating its sites, which is a nuisance ground near near El Scott, Alberta there. So that's for two seventy two. And then the next slide here is just kind of in relation to your debt limits. So you don't have any debt, but just like to indicate, you know, what your debt limits would be under the MGA. So it is calculated at one point five times your operating revenues of about fifty nine million. And then debt servicing is point two five times your operating revenue. So how much interest and principal you can be paying each year? So about nine point eight million. So again, you have no debt, but just to let you know what your your debt limits would be for our. Back to liabilities then. So you have about fifteen point seven million in in liabilities. So if you take your assets, A, which is fifty million less your liabilities, you end up with a net financial asset position of just under thirty five million. So what that means, if you take your cash, collect your receivables, pay off all your obligations, the county would still be left with thirty five million dollars. At at your end. So definitely a healthy financial position there. So liabilities were down three million. Your net financial assets was eight point six. When it comes to your non-financial assets, your tangible capital assets, there's kind of a breakdown year over year. I apologize for the engineered structure numbers. Those are not correct. The opening balance should be forty seven million, which is the net book value from prior year. The additions are all correct up to six point eight million. You have various bridge and culvert work there and engineer structures, a few graders that were purchased in machinery and equipment. And then in relation to bridge work and work in progress, that was then transferred up to engineered structures as well. The amortization should be about three point two million, not a hundred and forty one. And then the total should be five point three million when it comes to amortization there. So your amortization represents the usage of your assets. So if you have an asset that lasts five years, ten years, twenty years, you take a percentage of that, it gets reflected in your amortization expense. So currently you got six point eight million additions, five point three million amortization. So you've added to the net book value of your assets year over year. So that's kind of showing you an increase there, even though my numbers are are wrong. When it comes to back to the state of the financial position, inventory for consumption, it comes to gravel, you got three point two million there. The rest remains parts and chemicals about seven hundred and forty thousand. I left you a total non-financial assets about eighty six million versus eighty five point seven in the prior year. So if you take your net financial asset position plus your non-financial asset position, you end up with an accumulated surplus of just under a hundred and twenty one million. So that's broken out into a few categories. So you have your unrestricted surplus, which was up five point four million to twenty six point two. Your restricted reserves, which was up another about five million up to about twenty one from sixteen. And then your equity and tangible capital assets, which decreased about one point four million for a net change year over year of eight point nine. So how you can look at that is that the surplus amounts kind of represent the, say, the cash component of your equity, whereas the other tangible capital assets represent that represent your tangible capital assets with a non-cash component. So the change really to the surpluses was about ten point three million. Whereas the change in your capital assets was down one point four. So that factors in, you know, the amortization expense as well as the additions and then any grant funding applied. So your cash position of your accumulated surplus increased ten point three and then your equity or tangible capital asset portion decreased one point four. So when you look at your annual surplus, which would be about eight point nine million. More of that was actually attributed to your surpluses than your than your capital assets. Because sometimes you see municipalities will have a higher annual surplus, but really it's all tied into government, you know, grants in that case, whereas yours is more from the operations there. So when you look at your, the next slide here, your operating revenue on your statement of operations. You'll see total revenues here about thirty nine point three million. So you'll see your net municipal property tax is up to thirty point five from twenty point four, as you saw a tax rate increase as well as assessment increase rates year over year. So net net change is seven point three percent. User fees and sales of goods is up to three point three from two point six. You saw additional fire truck funds that were received as well as multiplex revenue increase in there. So that's where the user fee change is. It comes to government transfers for operating. So that was down year over year. Last year you had disaster recovery, sorry, disaster recovery funding kind of in there. So that's why that's kind of down. Investment income was up to two million. You had more cash and temporary investments on hand this year. So you saw a bump there in your investments. And then leaving you with again twenty nine point three million versus thirty six. The change in the other is in relation to multiplex revenue. So I think it was just a different reallocation within their their financial statements from other up to user fees. That's kind of why you're seeing the change there when it comes to to their revenue. This is kind of just a pie chart of the the county's revenue. So your net municipal net municipal property tax make up seventy eight percent. User fees nine and government transfer six comparison of prior year pretty similar is about seventy seven for taxes, seven for user fees and seven for for grants. When it comes to your expenses by function, so which department items were spent in transportation being up to eighteen million from sixteen, you saw additional gravel expenses in the year for repair work there as well as salaries, wages and benefits. When it comes to general administration, same items there in relation to to wages and salaries. It comes to recreational services, that was up. You had payments to the village of Boyle there. There was two in this year. You'll see that on our later on in our audit findings report in relation to that. So we have twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four in there. And then protective services, you saw additional fire expenses as well as wages and the increase in that department. So total expenses were up to thirty six from thirty one, so about a five million dollar change. And then down from what you had budgeted for three million, about eight point four percent change there. So this bar graph here kind of shows you where your budget was at in relation to your actual. So you can see it's either at or above and in all the categories except for the recreational services where we saw the additional village of Boyle payments really coming in there to to get that one over the over the budgeted amount. When it comes to expenses by object, you'll see your salaries and wages and benefits were up to about twelve point three from ten point four. So additional FTE in the year. Contract and general services were at nine point nine. Materials, goods and supplies, you saw additional gravel, gravel costs there hauling so up to five point nine from four point four. Everything else is pretty similar, transfers for local governments in relation to payments to the village of Boyle. So up to thirty six from thirty one. And these are kind of the, I guess, the object codes or categories that the the funding or your expenses were were incurred. So if you take your total operating revenues less your operating expenses, you ended with an operating surplus of just over three million. You'll see government transfer capital of two point nine. So this is in relation to your MSI stip funding and Canada Community Building Fund that was used for for tangible capital asset projects in the year. You have a recovery on settlement of environmental liabilities. So this is a couple things. One is in relation to the contaminated sites recovery. This is about a two point three million dollars there. As in, you know, Alberta Environment accepted your proposal to to change what was what was going on. So that resulted in less cost for you to to clean that up. So that resulted in a recovery of those estimated expenses previously based on the change there. So new information. And then as well, there was a four and eight thousand dollar recovery in relation to a reclamation of a gravel pit in in Bueller. So that that caused another recovery of costs there as additional liabilities were set up based on estimates or information previously given for those. So that's where that additional recovery comes in, which then results in an annual surplus of about eight point nine million. After you add another income plus your operating surplus of three million for about eight point nine there. There's also a restatement to the accumulated surplus in relation to grant funding. So there was various grant programs. Once the reporting was caught up in twenty twenty four for allocation of costs between where those grants would go that changed. So that resulted in a in a restatement there of five hundred and eighty one thousand and four hundred and fourteen thousand previously to twenty twenty three. So in turn, you get into the year with an annual surplus of eight point nine versus ten point one the prior year, your net financial asset position is up to about thirty five million from twenty six. We have an audit finance report as well, but in summary to that, we discussed our restatement for the government transfers. Other issues that we would have noted while performing our work. I just want to thank the team at the county for helping us to to get our audit done. And I guess if anybody has any questions on this part of the report, I can definitely go through them and answer.
Thank you very much. That's a lot of information. And I'm quite sure there's questions. Yes, go ahead, councillor Hall and then councillor Anderson, please.
Hi, Jeff. I think, I think just three questions. So for clarity, you talked about the two point three million dollar recovery from the Alberta environment. That's, can you clarify for us? That's a non-cash transaction. So that does not reflect cash position. That's just a, where we had to state a potential liability and we're able to back that out. Is that the case?
Yeah. So previously we had a liability that would have been estimated higher than it should have been. So when the actual cost came through or the the change or the or sorry, the change in the what was allowed caused caused that change.
What? Okay. Because what I want to make sure that we're clear on with our rate payers is that's not two point three million dollars worth of new cash. That's that's a paper transaction that does not.
Yeah, it just doesn't have to go out anymore. Yeah, correct.
So we don't run to the paper and say we've got an eight million dollar surplus and it's raining money at the county.
No.
The annual surplus, it is disclosed, that's three point zero eight five million. And you just help clarify for me, does that include funds that were specifically budgeted into reserves? Because I I think the the reserve budgeting wouldn't necessarily show up as an expense, but when council budgets four hundred grand for savings for retiring a future liability or four hundred and fifty for fire trucks. That actually has to come out of a positive surplus, right? So are those numbers excluded?
Yeah, there are no reserve transfers in your expenses. Yeah.
Okay. So then, even though it shows three million bucks, a lot of that has been by design planned and allocated by council. And then the the last thing that I I apologize if I've missed this in the financial somewhere. I just, I couldn't find it and was hoping you could help identify where in the statements we lay out for our council and rate payers, the dedicated reserves that council has established for various various things, including gravel pit, post closure reclamations, emergency services, evergreening and things of that nature.
Yeah. So on your financial statements on page twenty three, so note fifteen, those would have your accumulated surplus. So your unrestricted restricted capital operating reserves are are located in on that that note.
So which one reflects the gravel pit reclamation? Because I believe council seeded that with a million dollars last year.
If I may, just so that we're all on the same page, are you referring?
Page one eighty four of the agenda.
Thank you.
Because the financial statements are later. Can't quite remember the number. Somebody else at the table might. It was either a million or a million and a half dollars we seeded the gravel pit post closure reclamation fund with. And then made a plan to made a plan to, it looks like that we planned for two million dollars to go into that. To pay that off over fifteen years with annual installments. So we had the cash on hand when the with the rule makers in Edmonton told us we had to wipe it up.
As for that, as for where the two million would be, I'd have to either defer that to management or take a look myself. I don't necessarily see.
So I didn't miss it.
Sorry, I don't. Yeah, no, I don't see category for gravel pit reclamation on your on your reserves. So I'll have to like look into that after meeting, but.
There's a, you know, a mountain of you know, a four inch binder worth of rules that the accountants have to follow. But to me, the financial statements also have to have some kind of usefulness to the folks that are going to read them. And council's done a lot of good work and a lot of forward thinking. And to me, it matters that we're able to communicate that these things exist for us and we've made plans to work through them and to to cover them. So thank you for those responses.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to weigh in on that. When we looked at our reserves, the titles and purposes. As Rick Ramley is drafting a new policy for you to review in the next sixty to ninety days. We noticed some some titles and purposes of, well, actually, we couldn't figure out the purposes. So the last time this was looked at extensively. We suspect it made sense at that time. And we believe you probably need to revise it to reflect current issues. And for example, we're not sure what amortization fund is because amortization is not supposed to be a cash item. But so we've noticed some things, but we we did want to come back to council and perhaps retitle and repurpose your reserves.
Appreciate that. Thank you. You're good. All right, councillor Anderson, please go ahead.
Thank you. You mentioned the restatement a few times during your presentation, you know, twenty twenty three restated, restated. Would it be possible to kind of walk us through the restatement done and the different items that touched and why they were restated? I just want to make sure we have a good understanding.
So on the, I guess, a few more pages down the financial statement, note twenty five would be the the restatement note here. So when the, really when the grant reporting kind of got caught up. There were changes in relation to MSI, Canada Community Building Fund in relation to projects that were either previously designated or added in.
Sorry, we're just trying to determine page numbers.
What page for you guys? Yeah, I don't have your package in front of you.
Sorry, I should have stated.
I'll just say note twenty five.
Page one eighty nine of the agenda package.
Thank you. If I just made, so that's page one eighty nine of the agenda package, it would be number twenty five restatement in those notes.
So yeah, so in turn here, so the the county recognized revenue for four four graders in twenty twenty three under MSI, under the funding stipulations, the county is only is only approved for the purchase of three graders. So revenue in that year was overstated by six hundred and seventy eight thousand in relation to that. The county incurred costs for Aspen Ridge and and South Athabasca Agri at Chip Seal in twenty twenty one. Under the Canada Community Building Fund, the county is entitled to a maximum funding of four point or four hundred and fourteen thousand for this project. So no amount was recognized for this project and a S S revenue was understated twenty twenty one. So when you go back into your reporting and then you kind of change the project that, right? So that's kind of getting picked up then in the correct year. The county recognized revenue for the Richards Road Construction Project in twenty twenty three under the Canada Community Building Fund. Upon review of the statement of funding expenditures submitted for twenty twenty two. The maximum funding allowed for this project was fully expensed as of twenty two. So any costs incurred afterwards must be funded through other funding. So revenue was recognized for costs incurred in twenty twenty resulted in overstatement. So you had recognized funding that you in twenty twenty three that you shouldn't have based on what was approved. And then the last one, just in relation to the just significant delays in the in the submission. So just kind of outlining that and kind of resulted in an overstatement of receivables and an understatement of deferred and just kind of changing that up. So again, what the project costs were allocated to kind of changed when they were submitted.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. Jordan, I don't see councillor Capitan. Okay, thank you. I just wasn't sure if she may have questions waiting and I couldn't see her. So I appreciate that. Does anyone else have?
I'm here. I'm listening. I just thought I listened without the camera.
Thank you so much. You have any comments or questions you'd like to pose?
Thank you. Not at this time. I feel that the questions I had have been answered. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Just didn't want to miss you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments that they'd like to discuss?
No, I do have one question. Well, first of all, I thank you very much again. This is a huge job and as we all know, it's taxing on everybody. So I appreciate that. You mentioned on one of your slides, the net book value of tangible capital assets. There were some corrections. Are we able to have a corrected slide forwarded to us?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
That would be great. That would be fantastic so that we have all that information. So we're there. And I think if I'm not mistaken, nobody else has any questions. Which then would move us on to four point three, which is the closed presentation for the audit findings, which is under section twenty four, section one of advice from officials. And so if I may obtain a motion, councillor Cromwell would like to put a motion forward that we enter closed session. If everybody is ready for that, all those in favor. No opposed, I don't believe. So we are officially enclosed.
Thank you very much, welcome back, everybody. Uh, we are out of closed and on to item five point two, uh handling of motions by law zero zero nine twenty twenty-five from the April fifteenth special county council meeting uh that's on page sixty of your agenda. And I will turn this over to councillor Hall.
Yeah, I thank you, uh, I added this because I think, you know, it's important that we all respect the decision-making process and the results that come from that. But I feel like in a recent discussion regarding changes to that water and sewer rate that we may have lost away a little as it relates to the process. And I feel like, I I feel like we can do better. And I know we've done better in the past on discussions of difficult issues, including previous water rate dis- discussion where council spent a considerable time working to find compromise, it was slightly more than, you know, a simple majority. And so we know that councillors are required to uphold the bylaws of the municipality and the code of conduct, and I think even the oath of office talk about that. And I think council needs to lead by example, and we cannot disregard our bylaws, including the procedural bylaw, when it becomes inconvenient. And so I I would agree, and I believe that everybody at the table feels like we need to fix the water rates bylaw. But we need to do it through what I would consider a more legitimate process, through discussion and compromise. And I think it's imperative we follow both consistent process in all the things we do. And so I'm still of the belief that at the April fifteenth special meeting, we ignored the procedural bylaw to reintroduce a decided matter without uh a motion for reconsideration. And while I don't know what happened at the lunch table to cause a one vote swing on what I identical motion, I do know that the discussion of an identical motion doesn't meet our standards. And while I want to be in a position to respect whatever result we have when it's legitimately made, I don't feel the process met the standard that we try to hold ourselves to. And so that's why I proposed a motion to directed men to seek legal advice regarding the handling of the water rates bylaw zero nine two zero five at the April fifteen special council meeting, specifically to confirm whether permitting motion twenty-five ten after the defeat of motion twenty-five oh nine is in compliance with our procedural bylaws requirement. Let a motion for reconsideration be carried before discussion of a matter already decided. Once you defeat the reading of a bylaw, the bylaw is finished and you need to start from scratch, including following all the rules, circulation and a new number. And so I I guess for me, the question comes up is what can it hurt to find out if we're on the right track? To confirm whether we're in compliance? Because it's important we consistently follow our process to maintain public confidence in our decision-making. And I know, I suspect at least, I should say, that some will be unhappy with this proposal. I would, I don't I would not be acting with integrity if I didn't put my concerns about the process to pass first and second readings in front of you and our residents first.
Thank you. Does anyone have comment? Okay, um, councillor Anderson?
Um, being that this is quite specific um to the one motion and the need for reconsideration beforehand, um narrowing down the or it appears to be narrowing down the scope, um I have to say, I've also had a couple of different residents approach me asking about the pecuniary interest that was declared at previous water discussions, and so I would uh potentially also like to get legal advice on that so that we could be clear and so that can be just dealt with and not being drug up again.
Thank you, um, I believe councillor uh Capitanic has her hand up and then councillor Minns, and I'd like to weigh in as well.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for accusing me for having to move locations. Um, I I'm actually really uh been thinking about this for a while and think that um it we have gotten legal advice on many matters just to make sure that we're on the right track, and that is part of our um duty is to make sure we are on the right track. So I would suggest, like, in this case, absolutely, if you think that there is nothing to be worried about, and we've done the right thing, to vote to get um a lawyer to verify that, just to make sure, so that we can all answer the same question with the same answer, that we know for sure we did the correct thing. And then councillor Anderson just brought up something too, which I actually was thinking about, um, and I know that this would be more likely for the discussion um when when and if a bylaw would come back, but um I'd be really interested to know how the water hauling industry would be looking at getting a subsidy that is greater than what they're currently getting for water, and if they would be looking at passing that on to their consumers. So that's something I would like to take some time and and ask around about as well.
Thank you, go ahead councillor Minns.
I I don't believe that we really need to go and talk to a lawyer, because a lawyer is going to give us exactly what if if when you look at the procedure bylaw, we had a discussion about this at the minutes and and here at three point three. And if you look at the procedure bylaw, you look at the the uh uh how how the motions were moved and and how it was presented, I don't think we need to go to a legal legal opinion, every time we go to a legal opinion, we spend more money. And like all we're trying to do is actually save people money. And I don't understand what, why we can we can subsidize uh subsidize uh programs for some people. And we pick one one entity of Athabasca County and we say, no, 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 you're paying full cost. And but everybody else, no, no, we'll subsidize you to 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 heck and back, so I I don't even know why we're even discussing this, we we have a bylaw that actually helps people. And and we're sitting here fighting on whether we we should pass a bylaw. Like, I I just don't understand it, I I will not vote to go to legal, because I don't think we did anything wrong. And I will move on the next issue to get going on this bylaw, if if we if we keep stalling this thing out, we keep stalling, keep stalling. Now, all of a sudden, we can't, we can't implement this bylaw May first, now it's going to go to June first. And Lord knows if 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 the lawyer will get back to us, then maybe maybe July first, and then maybe August, and we should have been discussing this bylaw in January, not May. So let's move this and let's get going. We've got better things to talk about here than 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 actually trying to I can't even, I can't even believe that we're we're discussing not saving people money. I I just can't believe it.
Thank you, go ahead councillor Cromwell.
Great words by councillor Minns, you took a lot of what I wanted to say and did it for me, I I very much appreciate that. You know, in regards to other questions about legal advice on pecuniary interest and things change, what could have been an issue at one day or a perceived issue cannot be. Asking if a water hauler is going to reduce their rate to a rate pair would be like asking the town of Athabasca why they are charging uh so much at a water fill station when they get the one of the lowest, if not the lowest rate on the water commission. Asking a water hauler, a private entity, what are you going to bill? Where were you not making the profit you needed to before, where were you not increasing the rate from when we were at five point two five a cube and we went up to nine, how much of a hit did you take so that your customers, your neighbors, your friends and family did not get hit with excruciating high water bills? I know water haulers that did not put their rates up properly when we increased our rate, because you're dealing with your friends, your family, your neighbors, your community, and now asking, I want to see your books and make sure that you're doing a fair deduction, I think is unreasonable. Overreach. We have a bylaw that works, it's unfortunate if you don't like it and you don't agree. We operate as a majority, we did everything according to book, it is appropriate, it is right, we are doing what is good for our community. I'm sorry, the end.
Thank you, um, first of all, I'll address uh pecuniary interest concerns. Uh, when it comes to utilities, as we've been through several training exercises and orientation and all of those things doesn't apply to utilities because utilities are are countywide, um, so that has been, as far as I'm concerned, cleared out. The bringing it forward a- at this time for me seems combative, and that's not where um I feel we need to go uh down this road, um. Saying that we did things wrong, and my personal opinion is incorrect, um, and I'll tell you why, um. So regarding this bylaw, zero zero nine twenty twenty-five, excuse me. I'm confident that all the first readings and the second reading, plus the motions, including twenty-five two oh nine and twenty-five two ten were made in good faith and in proper manner during April fifteenth twenty twenty-five special council uh meeting in accordance with the MGA, in accordance with our procedural bylaw seventeen twenty twenty-three, section twelve and thirteen point five, in accordance with Robert's Rules of Orders, in accordance with the municipal affairs, basic principles of bylaw, and our C A O's advice during the discussion in the meeting. And I find it a little frustrating, I guess, personally frustrating that you you're asking for a legal opinion in a section of a meeting that you were not in attendance for. From my understanding, excuse me, of how bylaws are passed, and with there being no limit other than time to how many first readings can be read in a meeting, I will be voting against obtaining a legal review as requested by councillor Hall. I believe the bylaw process has been followed correctly, and that a costly legal review is not a productive use of taxpayers' dollars, and it is not a productive use of administrative or council time. As we know, in the section nine of the MGA, uh, the guides to interpreting interpreting power to pass bylaws, it gives broad authority to councils and to respect their right to govern municipalities in whatever way the councils consider appropriate within the jurisdiction given to them under this or any other enactment. Councils address bylaws in their procedural bylaw with this in mind. So addressing thirteen point five, uh, in our reference to our procedural bylaw seventeen twenty twenty-three, the motions section thirteen point five, it refers to a reconsideration of a question that has been decided, not a matter already decided as described in the R F D of our agenda package. The word matter in the R F D can be misleading and is not used in section thirteen point five. Section thirteen of the procedural bylaw refers to motions, not bylaws. It is my understanding motions and readings in a bylaw are not the same thing. Bylaws have their own section of the procedural bylaw and are also uh referred to in section twelve. It is my understanding that a first or second reading of a bylaw is not the same as deciding the question, since a question that is decided is after a final vote, or in the case of a bylaw, after the third reading. First and second reading are not final votes for a bylaw to pass. First and second reading cannot decide the question. Third reading is for any final debate, final amendments and final voting. It is not until the third reading carries that a bylaw is passed or the question is decided. Addressing section twelve in our uh reference to our procedural bylaw uh seventeen twenty twenty-three, the bylaw section twelve, as I have mentioned, it is my understanding that in Alberta, a municipal bylaw can be read multiple times if the first reading fails. And a new first reading can be introduced without needing to first address a failed first reading. Section twelve of our procedural bylaws specific in its wording in twelve point four, it reads, when any one of the second or third readings is defeated, the bylaw is considered to be rescinded in its entirety. What this means is that the first readings do not kill a bylaw. They are not a final vote and cannot decide the question, which again speaks to why there is no requirement for reconsideration when a new first reading is introduced. Again, a new first reading, it was not the same language, it was not the same first reading as the one that failed. When a draft bylaw fails to receive first reading, it simply means that the council did not support the initial proposal. The council can then introduce a new first reading proposal and then go through the usual readings. From there, um I'm not going to go back through the description of how the motions and the readings all took place. However, again, I will reiterate, I fully believe that we followed proper procedure according to how bylaws are passed. Therefore, I cannot uh support going further into stalling and into ca costly legal uh opinions when the information that I've just um provided, as far as I'm concerned, covers, there's no need to. Councillor Wall.
So we, excuse me, so we obviously have varying opinions on the bylaw procedure. Um, so I don't know why it would wouldn't hurt to just get a third party to tell you you're right. I don't know why that's going to hurt, it's going to be one phone call. It's not going to be crazy costly, like any investigation we've done, it's massive costs, but we're not okay just checking to see if we're doing right, so I just think because there's such varying of opinions on this matter, we need to get a legal opinion.
Thank you, anyone else? Councillor Gerlach.
We're three and a half years into a four-year term. We started out with everybody being replaced. We started out with people in the administrative positions that had very little experience and could provide us with could not provide us with the kind of uh uh direction and and that that we expect to receive now. And I think we have to kind of And I think we have to kind of show the public that we've matured a little bit in three and a half years, that we're still not at the point where we're talking about recorded votes. Technicalities. I mean, if we'd have gone to a, uh, to a reconsideration, it would have been uh, five, three, which is as close to two thirds as you can get in that, in that uh, situation. So it's, it, to me, it's a red herring. It's irrelevant. Uh, and I think that we should, I, I feel like a broken record when I keep talking about that there's wants and needs. And there are certain things that, that people need. You cut their power off, it's, it's drastic. You cut their heat off, it's drastic. You cut their water and sewer off, it's drastic. Those are needs. And we should be looking after it. We should make it as simple and straightforward as we can. A flat rate right across the board. And uh, and that should include the town uh, at their truck fill, selling it for that same price and six bucks rate across. How much, how much of the, of that six dollars is going back in uh, for uh, in, into uh, future expenditures like your, like isn't in a hundred and some thousands of that portion of that deficit that we're talking about?
So you're referring to the reserves?
Yes.
A hundred and seven thousand, two hundred out of the reserves, which then, when you look at what is on our current budget and then what the deficit says, if you knock off that hundred and seven thousand, two hundred, it brings us back down to about a hundred and fifty five thousand, which what, what's our average was prior to increasing our rates up to the nine plus.
This is a pretty good point, and I would really like to see us do it by consensus. Uh, and, and coming to an agreement and showing that we have at least made some progress since day one. Because right now, we're right back where we were at day one. It was not a good decision then, and this, maybe, maybe this can salvage something.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Anderson.
Seems like some of the conflict around the table could be resolved by determining which interpretation of the procedural bylaw is correct. And I don't want to see this kind of situation continue to happen throughout the end of our term. I think that there's other things that we need to get on to. And so if we can determine a path forward where we can get legal advice and all be on the same page moving forward, then that's what will lead to better decisions being made and us being able to actually make those decisions rather than going through this kind of situation again. So. Um, I came into this not really sold on whether or not legal advice would be worth this, worth the money. Um, but after the discussion around the table, I do think that um, that would help to unify us so we can move in a similar direction, whether whether that means we vote things unanimously or not, it doesn't matter, just that we all are working on the same rules and that we can move on in that direction.
Thank you. I think at this time, looks like we're ready to go to a vote. The recommendation, uh, the recommended motion, if you'd like to read that again, please.
Well, I, I would make a, um, the motion was to direct administration to seek legal advice regarding the handling of the water rates by law zero nine, two zero two five at the April fifteen special council meeting specifically to confirm whether permitting motion twenty five, two ten after the defeat of motion twenty five oh nine is in compliance with Athabasca County's procedural bylaw zero one, seven, two, two, three requirement that a motion for reconsideration be carried before discussion of a matter already decided. And that the concluding statement I would make is that when first reading is defeated, you don't go to second reading, so it's just over. It's, it's very clear that there are differences of opinion on whether we're within the rules or not. And, you know, we've, we've spent money counting cars at intersections with no idea what we're doing with the numbers. We've, this seems like a reasonable decision to validate and to verify. I, there is no dispute as far as I can tell about the need to make changes to the rates, about the need to make changes to how we charge for water and how we provide that service. The question is, are we going about it the right way? So if it, for me, if there's something to hide in the handling of it, vote against it. But to not check whether we're in compliance, risks putting something in place that won't stand up. Let's make sure we're doing it right. If we're confident that we've handled it properly, there's no risk in checking. And I'll ask for a recorded vote.
Thank you. Are we ready to go to the vote? All right. So on that motion, Tammy, did you get it? Or would it's in the recommendation? So you're good to go? Yep. All right. We're going to go for all those in favor, the recommendation.
I.
Thank you. We have Counselor Wallack, Counselor Hall, Counselor Anderson and Counselor Kapitaniak, all those opposed. We have Counselor Chamsik, Counselor Holland, Counselor Minz, Counselor Gerlach and Counselor Cromwell. The motion fails.
Madam Chair, given the failure of that motion, I wonder if uh, I could propose a motion that it may be directed to engage a parliamentarian to provide training and guidance on parliamentary procedure and adherence to the municipal government act and our procedural bylaw for the effective running of meetings.
I'll speak to that. Um, I think we've had a lot of training with regards to effective meetings through our RMA training. We've had uh, training through our um, orientations. We've been through legal seminars. Um, and we have a very specific procedural bylaw that is there for me, it didn't need to be interpreted. It was there in black and white. So, um, the motion, is anybody else would like to speak on regarding training? Go ahead.
Could we read the motion again, just a little bit slower this time?
My, my apology. That it may be directed to engage a parliamentarian to provide training and guidance on parliamentary procedure and adhering to the municipal government act and or procedural bylaw for the effective running of meetings.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Minz.
I feel the same way. We've been uh, taking uh, training, training after training after training. It is now uh, close to May first, uh, end of, end of our, our uh, term is here in around September, let's say October, and, and we're going to go into uh, taking more training. Um, I think that's kind of like a waste of, again, waste of money for, because there's, this training is going to be provided for the next council. So I do believe that uh, again, we've, 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 we've went by our procedural bylaw. We, we that procedural bylaw has been in place since, I think it was renewed in twenty twenty three. And I'm going to say it again, let's move on here. Let's, you know, wha- what are we doing? Let, let's move on and, 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 and create better, better uh, create better water rates, like. What was given to us last time? Or no, I'm not even going to what was given to us last time. It was, it was crazy. Okay? I don't think we need more training.
Thank you, Counselor Chamsik.
I think many of us have had the opportunity to seek that extra training as well, whether it be even through different committees, so on, so forth. Um, and having that opportunity to seek that extra training, if one shall look, you can also shall seek. And I, I feel that we have had plenty of, and if I'm not mistaken, prior to our remuneration policy being opened before, again, this last time with our training budget being in there. Um, in the past, some of the council members have voted against doing some of that extra training as well.
Thank you, Counselor Kapitaniak.
Well, I'm not one for extra training. Um, I mean, I, in theory, it's probably a great idea at the beginning or even probably through the term. So I would definitely uh, hope that um, we could see that if necessary for the next term. But um, what I am worried about and that I think is understanding the wording on bylaws and why um, this council is divided and it, because it is all about interpretation. And while some people in this council are very perplexed as to why others voted down an even lower rate that was proposed by one of the members, um, to then come in and make it sound like the higher rate was the lower rate. That's where I think training would come in because it was the reading and all the amendments and the wording that may have confused some people. And I have been around town and people um, that have asked about it, um, are, are confused why we're essentially arguing over a six dollars when four dollars was shot down. So the argument that you're trying to do the best and the lowest you can for the people is not actually valid. And if training would make that clear, that's the only way I would vote for it. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Minz, Counselor Cromwell.
I uh, I didn't uh, I specifically didn't want to go into the water rates. Because we're not talking about water rates right now. We're talking about training. But when you brought it up, Counselor Kapitaniak, the four dollars was, was uh, voted down. Uh, and you can't figure it out. It's like, we pay at the reservoir four dollars and thirteen cents a cube. And you're going to tell me that, that we were going to move a, a, a bylaw that where, where we it, it's, it's crazy. We pay fourteen or four dollars and thirteen cents and you want us to charge four dollars? Like, who in their right, that, that doesn't even fit into a budget. Who in their right mind would even put that through? That, that's what I couldn't figure out. But there were so many numbers that day and, and so many different, well, this person will charge this way, this person will charge that way, this will do this way, we'll stand in our head to charge this way. No. And plus, we couldn't even charge that way because we don't have the system in place. So don't go there and say that uh, we, we voted down the four dollar rate. We voted down. It's just a, a crazy bylaw.
And, and I appreciate the follow-up, but if we could really stick to training, um, and I, I know if you, you, I know you have a comment, please go ahead, but we do need to stick to the training aspect.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sorry, can I just respectfully interject to the chair? When a member is addressing someone at the table directly, you're disrespecting you, and I would like to not be addressed directly unless the chair accepts it. Thank you.
That's all. I couldn't really understand what she said. If you could repeat that, please. Um, it's, for me, it sounded a little.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Reeve Holland. Um, when a member directly addresses someone across the table, they are disrespecting you because they need to go through the chair and that's at your will. And so I do not accept anyone addressing me directly unless the chair accepts it.
Oh, I appreciate that. Um, and again, um, as you mentioned, it's up to the chair. I've been disrespected several times at this table, so I, it becomes something as of the norm. Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you very much. And, and this is getting to be a good old dog and pony show. We, we see good bills being shut down or, sorry, what appear to be good bills being shut down in higher levels of government all the time because you read page one hundred and ninety-two or the clause where after you hit fifty cubes, then your charge is going up. And we're not talking about equality. We're hiding little things in there. Saying that a four dollar cube was the proposal is a portion of the truth. There was much behind that that made that a, in my opinion, not well motion and put in there just to to try and uh, move a narrative. I'm done with this. We, we know what needs to be done. And let's stop fighting and act like adults and actually do our job.
Thank you. Okay, I will get back to the training aspect. And I will remind council that in our policy two thousand and nine, you have a training budget. If you feel you are needing of training, you by all means can go out and, and get that so long as you're within your budget to do so. Um, when it comes to doing parliamentary um, and, and whatnot, I agree. We are coming to the end of our term. If we are not comfortable with understanding how things work at this point in the game, please go ahead and get that training for yourself. But uh, we will be revisiting this same thing again in October, um, uh, November, I would assume, uh, depending on who returns to the table. So with that, I am not in favor of, of putting our taxpayers through another scenario of a whole council matter of training if there's only a few uh, counselors who are not comfortable with understanding our procedural bylaw. Go ahead, Counselor. Uh, Counsel, uh, Counselor, BCAO, Counselor Beck.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just so you know, um, we're not asking for council permission. We're already scheduling a parliamentarian for the next council and we're just booking it. So, um, we, we believe it's normal to have that, just like we've already booked uh, orientation. Um, so uh, we'll provide those dates in a future calendar. Um, and the second thing I think I'd like to add is Bill fifty was just recently tabled by the province and it appears from all we understand is we all will lose our procedural bylaw and we will all have to adhere to a new procedural template provided by the province is what we understand. So um, we'll be bringing ahead a discussion item to council in the near future about Bill fifty and all the implications that we understand. We were kind of hoping for some uh, maybe some uh, training by uh, municipal affairs. Uh, maybe they could put on a, a Zoom webinar or something on here's how you handle Bill fifty, but uh, we've got some others. So uh, either way, it's our understanding that everyone's going to have one common procedural bylaw in the future. So just something for you to consider.
Thank you very much. I believe we probably have beat this one down. So if we're ready for the votes, Tammy, do you have the motion? Would you mind reading it, please?
Moved by Counselor Hall that counsel direct administration to hire a parliamentarian and to provide proper training. And I didn't get the rest.
And guidance on, on parliamentary procedure and adhering to the municipal government act at our procedural bylaw for the effective running of meetings.
Just for clarification, there's no date in the motion? Okay, thank you.
Recorded vote as well. So Counselor Wallack. Very good. So we have all those in favor. One, two, three. Waiting for Counselor Kapitaniak. She's got her hand up for. And all those opposed. One, two, three, four, five. That motion fails. Uh, she was voting. Correct. You were voting. Yep. So if we will move on now to item six point one. I'm just going to find my page here. Six point one of our bylaw, zero zero nine, two zero two five, water and ser- water and sewer service charges, page sixty-one of your agenda. The recommendation here is that council amend bylaw zero zero nine, twenty twenty five by replacing the following sentence. This bylaw shall come into force and affect upon final passing and signing thereof with the following sentence. This bylaw shall come into force and affect on May first, twenty twenty five. And that council give third reading of bylaw zero zero nine, twenty twenty five. So just for uh, confirmation, um, we will look at the motion first and then we will deal with the reading second. Okay? Does anyone who would like to own the motion? Counselor Cromwell? As recommended, the motion would be to replace the bylaw shall come into force and affect upon final passing and signing thereof would be replaced with this bylaw shall come into force and affect on May first, twenty twenty five. Alrighty, we're ready for, there's no conversation. If we're ready for the vote. Oh, go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Okay. Um, I know in the first couple readings or whatever happened at the special meeting, there was discussion around the calculations that had been made, um, for the local improvement levy to Collington. And in reviewing this bylaw and going back to our last water rates bylaw, in the last water rates bylaw, we had specifically stipulated that we wanted it to read water commission rate plus our fixed fee. So that as the water commission rate fluctuated, it would automatically be calculated in that. And we wouldn't have to revisit the bylaw and hash it all out again. And I think that is one of the things that we did right when we did that. Um, now whether we set the rate that we were adding to the right amount, I don't know. But I do think that setting it so that it would automatically amend itself and not need to be reopened every time was something we did right. And so for that reason, I think that we should consider doing that with the local improvement levy. So that it's the same rate as everybody else minus one twelfth of the local improvement levy. So if a future council decides to eliminate the local improvement levy, it automatically is adjusted to the same rate as everybody else.
Okay.
Um, I think that some of the confusion in our community has been caused by us trying to calculate it and put a lower rate on our bylaw versus being clear and honest that they're paying the same rate minus one twelfth. Versus being clear and honest that they're paying the same rate minus one twelfth. And so I, I do think that we should consider making that amendment.
Okay, so that would be an amendment to the third reading that you're talking about, that you're, you're hoping to have that conversation. I will remind. Council that, that very motion or that very motion that was a pass to do that then failed at first reading. So, um. That is already, we already brought that to the table, which is why we're at where we're at now. Is we went with the item that was as presented, the rate as presented in, in the last meeting. So that was already done. But we're gonna look at the motion here right now about, uh, May first, twenty, twenty-five. So if we can please vote on that, uh, first. We have a motion here that we need to, uh, replace the following sentence in bylaw zero, zero, nine, twenty, twenty-five. This bylaw, or does that become part of the third reading? Or is that a separate motion?
Madam Chair, the amending the bylaw is before third reading. So it's the entire wording. That is before and that council give third reading.
Thank you. Okay. So if we can look at that motion, uh, folks, that's on the table, um, for May first, twenty, twenty-five to make this bylaw effective for.
Can you read the motion clearly, please?
So this, uh, the council amend bylaw zero, zero, nine, twenty, twenty-five by replacing the following sentence. This bylaw shall come into force and effect upon final passing and signing thereof with the following sentence. This bylaw shall come into force and effect on May first, twenty, twenty-five. Okay? Do, we're going to do that separate, correct?
Uh, Madam Chair, and I understood it was moved by councillor Cromwell.
Correct. Alright, so if we're ready for that question, all those in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and opposed. Two. So that passes, which moves us on to that council give third reading of bylaw zero, zero, nine, twenty, twenty-five. That would be councillor Minns who would like to, um, give third reading of bylaw zero, zero, nine, twenty, twenty-five. Councillor Gerlock.
So what effect does that have on the truck fill rates in Collington?
They would be, as far as I understand from reading the bylaw, all the truck fills would be the same, um, rate across. Six dollars.
Six dollars. So is there any reason why we don't deal with that rate right now and get this thing cleaned up once and for all?
Um, I believe it's be- because we have to consider the, um, Collington levy that we would need to repeal. The Collington levy and then that would. You make all of the rates uniform without having to deal with the fact that that Collington levy is, is being, uh, forgiven. Through the hamlet of Collington. It has nothing to do with the truck fill because it's going to the tap and the people in, in Collington. Have been charged a levy on their property as a local improvement. So their property tax sees that levy. We can, we have an option and our new council has an option to repeal. That particular bylaw, which I would probably recommend happen in January because we're this close to the end of the year, right? But it has nothing to do with that at this time.
Yeah, that needs to be cleaned up at some time.
I understand what you're saying. Okay, third reading.
Point of clarification, I, I thought a colleague had asked for a. We've just voted on an amendment to the text of the bylaw and I thought that there was an indication that there was desire for another amendment to the text of the bylaw. Before it goes to third reading.
Um, from what I understand, the amendment that we just voted on would be included in the third reading. That's the change of the wording. Uh, I didn't hear another amendment that was, uh, on the floor. And so therefore we're now at the stage of going, uh, and that council give third reading of the bylaw, zero, zero, nine, twenty, twenty-five. As amended, and that's councillor Anderson?
I would like to make that amendment. That was my intention. I don't know if I'd set the words correctly, but. I was trying to make an amendment to schedule A.
Okay. Everybody go to.
Minus one twelfth of the local improvement levy.
Schedule A is page sixty-four and I'm sorry, your amendment is to do what now?
To indicate, to amend schedule A to indicate that the Collington hamlet user fee. Is six dollars per meter cubed minus one twelfth of the local improvement levy.
So you would like to add those words? And we would still result at four twenty-four?
I believe it would, yeah, it would work out the same, but it would be more clearly defined so that. When other users of the system look at the bylaw. It's not just showing like we're giving favoritism to Collington. It's actually explained a little bit as to why they receive that reduction. Not just we're reducing it for them.
I think it's been very clear why councillor Minns.
It's, we've been discussing this since the beginning of this bylaw back in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, we did it and we tried to do it in twenty-four to say, you know what, let's make this more clear to people. That they're actually not. That everybody's paying the same rate by actually getting rid of this improvement levy because. Nobody's paying for it anymore, but yet we still show it. We still show it as an improvement levy and then we take it off their water rates. So. I don't know why all of a sudden now we, we decide we're gonna, we're gonna start, uh, trying to explain it to people. We've been trying to explain it to people. And, 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 uh. If, if the bylaw would have passed first reading, the last bylaw, it was wrote right in there. That due to the, to the water rates or to the improvement levy that it actually dropped. And now. Now we're trying to put another amendment on it and what scares me about this amendment and that amendment and this amendment, all of a sudden. Then, then another procedural bylaw thing comes in fact that then all of a sudden we can't pass this. And it's like. Can we not just? Pass this loving schedule A bylaw, please, and, and, and move on.
And, and I believe, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I know the question was already asked about the third reading. For this bylaw that with the, uh, motion that we just, uh, passed that was the amendment. So. I'm, if we really want to get procedural, um, I can. Say we're already at that point, we can't accept any further motions. Councillor Wallack?
I'm sorry, but the point of councils have to have differing opinions. If we can't make comments and. And make motions to differ opinions and we get rammed down our throats that we have to just do this. This is not council, like this is not democracy. I'm sorry, but this is getting quite aggressive.
Um. Uh, thank you for your words and I think, you know, we, um, I, I, I'm, I'm just gonna leave it at that. Because I think that there is, uh, proof in the pudding on how this is working. Councillor Cromwell?
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, to point out that per the amendment that. Is trying to be put on right now, that Collington had the reduced rate of one dollar point one two per cube. That would actually raise the water in Collington from four point two four per cubic meter to four point eight eight per cubic meter. I just want to throw that out there.
Well, and again, the amendment that's being proposed, I think, was wording for one twelfth, um, of the rate. And again, that can challenge the bylaw like you mentioned and also failed. At first reading. So for me, I don't think that the amendment is. Uh, the first reading that we did back on, on the fifteenth. I don't believe the amendment is actually, uh, suitable. For the situation that we have right now. So I will, um, councillor Gerlock?
Yeah, uh. If the bylaw should be passed at six dollars a cube, then. Should the sewer rate not be amended to reflect thirty-five percent of six dollars as opposed to four dollars, whatever?
Yes, that is in the, that is already here, thirty-five percent of the actual monthly water billing. So it's, it's already covered in the bylaw.
What is the actual, is the actual for something or?
I'm sorry?
Is the actual is for something, isn't?
Well, it would be thirty percent of the actual monthly water billing. So whatever they have on their invoice that they're receiving for that billing.
But it's at a reduced rate.
Yes, it would be on their billing and so their, their.
They should be paying thirty-five percent of six dollars, the same way everybody else is in all the other elements.
Uh, like I mentioned, Collington has always had that, um. I'll just put it, I'll just be honest. Anytime you take a, a, uh, improvement levy and forgive it. By reducing a rate somewhere else, it's going to create problems. And Collington has always had that reduced rate to forgive, which has then impacted their monthly billing for their sewer, correct? We can, like I mentioned, to, as you would, had also mentioned, deal with that improvement levy. And I actually have a motion that we can deal with that, uh, once we deal with this. Alright.
Could I, could I just clarify that, like? Collington gets this forgiven because water lines were installed in Wandering River. At the county's full cost and the residents there do not pay for them except through their taxes. When the water lines were installed in Collington, there was a local improvement levy set up. So in order to level the playing field. That's why it's being forgiven. If we, if the council of the day had acted consistently. They would have put a local improvement levy in place in Wandering River. And, and left the one alone in Collington and then, you know, the table would be kind of level. And then when we go to replace water lines in grassland. We could do the same thing. That, that's what is at issue. And I, and I think the, um, what councillor Gerlick was. Suggesting is. On the sewer charge, we're talking about thirty-five percent of the actual billing and he was saying, well, should it be thirty-five percent of six dollars, not thirty-five percent of four? And in order to have that equivalent across communities. The sewer charge in Collington should be forty-nine percent because what thirty-five percent of six is two dollars and ten cents. Two dollars and ten cents divide by four twenty-four is forty-nine percent. I believe that's what you're asking. And I'm not sure that that, that message was, was clear, but in that way, both. Two parties paying for water in two different communities, both pay the equivalent of two-ten per cube on water, on sewer.
Go ahead councillor Gerlock and then I think we're gonna slowly wrap this up.
With Wandering River, this, the, 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 the water lines were in. Uh, we're in prior to, to County of Athabasca taking that in.
I think we replaced it and upgraded afterward.
It was just, it was just new water, water reservoir and, and lines to the reservoir.
I'll, I'll, through the chair, I'll, 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 through the chair, I'll rebut that, that, uh. The reason the water line was taken from Boyle to Grassland. To Wandering River is because when. The water plant at Wandering River and Grassland were getting to be. Uh, tough to, 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 uh, operate. Um, when they decided they were going to, transportation decided they were gonna twin highway sixty-three. They went right smack dab through our reservoir, our water treatment plant and everything. So lo and behold. We were actually given, given a gift from the government, ninety, ninety cent dollars. To install that water line and, and the county had to, uh, come up with a ten percent. And, but we had water and sewer in, in Wandering River before we took over. And, uh, that's why that happened. And then when Collington people found out that. That there was no, uh, water, uh, improvement levy put on to them to minis- new two hamlets. Well, they were upset because they had to pay a, an improvement levy to get the, uh, water line. From Cornwall to Collington. And then council decided, well. Yes, they should have been actually straightforward and taken that improvement levy off, but no, let's go with another rate reduction someplace and make it. So convoluted that everybody can't get along with us anymore. So this is how it all came to, to, to happen. Was through the twinning of highway sixty-three. We were able to get water up to Grassland and Wandering River. And improve everything up there. So. So it, 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 it wasn't because there was extra lines put down into Collington.
Thank you. And, and I believe as well with the, um, when Collington received water, there was an injection from the. The municipality, an injection from, uh, the government as well as an, uh, injection of, of funding from Collington. So again, there was the same scenario happening in Wandering River and Grassland. We have this situation. Um, I am prepared, as I said, to mention, uh, a motion that I have, uh, up, up and coming here with regards to. The Collington levy that I think will hopefully solve a lot of the concern. So I will, I will read that after we go through with this particular, uh, amendment to change the wording again. Um, to, I believe it was one twelfth of the Collington levy. Tammy, did you get that? The amendment, um, that we're out of courtesy going to go through because the. What was on the table was already read.
So I have moved by councillor Anderson to amend schedule A, the Collington hamlet minimum charge, six dollars, one twelfth. Of the Collington levy. The Collington improvement levy. Improvement levy, yeah.
Did you want the bylaw number for that? The Collington improvement levy bylaw one dash zero, two, zero, zero, seven. Alright folks, so on the amendment of what we were just heard. We're going to take it to the question. Um, I can't see. Councillor Capitania, can I, are we gonna be able to hear you?
I'm here, but I can't figure out why, how to get my camera back on, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So on that amendment, all those in favor. One, two, three, and all those opposed. One, two, three, four, five. Sorry Natasha, what?
Yeah, I know. I'm, ah, sorry, I messed up. I hate Zoom.
Are you for or against?
Sorry, I'm against.
Against. So that would be six and three. So we will move to, uh, third reading. Of bylaw zero, zero, nine, twenty, twenty-five with the amendment that the bylaw shall come into force and effect on May first, twenty, twenty-five. All those in favor. Pardon me?
Do we not discuss these things?
We just did, I thought.
We haven't even discussed the bylaw.
We have discussed.
Discussing amendments, we were like.
And we've discussed the bylaw as it. We have gone through quite a lot of discussions. So we're going through, we've discussed this for a year and a half or more. Alright, so we're going for third reading. Once again, all those in favor. One, two, three, four, five, and all those opposed.
Nay.
Two, three. Well, I'm sorry, but you have to vote, it is the law.
If we don't have the courtesy to have a discussion around the motion before it's zipped through as fast as you can do it. I think we are at a really sad and disappointing point as a group.
Thank you councillor Hall, you have the opportunity to vote. I'm going to call now.
Count.
Enough, we have had the conversation.
She had a question and she was ignored. It's my vote opposed. Record me as.
Thank you.
Point of order, it's enough out of everybody.
Uh, would you like to be opposed or would you like to be for?
I have three times tried to say that, but you keep shutting the microphone off. I think you need to decide what you want.
That's not up to me. You need to vote for or.
For the fourth time, the word is opposed.
Thank you. So that would be five and four. Thank you. Alright, the next item we have here is six point two. That is bylaw zero, 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 one, one, dash, twenty, twenty-five for the tax rate. It is on page sixty. Oh, pardon me, before I move on. I mentioned I had a motion, did I not? I did, I have two. I'm going to go back to that. So the motion, um, the two motions that I have, the first one is to, um. Direct administration to, um, create an annual review. In January for the water and sewer services charges bylaw. So that, that is clear and that we have an annual review of this particular bylaw. Is there discussion?
Can you repeat that, please?
Yes, that to direct admin- administration to create an annual review. To complete a water and sewer services charge bylaw for January. January of every year. Okay, councillor Chamsik. Does that work well for administration, just timelines and stuff like that? I mean, lots of prep time.
Well, since you ask, Madam Chair, um. I don't know if annually changing utility rates is best practice around Alberta. Um. First of all, utility rates are usually, usually don't divide a council. Utility rates are usually usually don't divide a council, but secondly. Uh they're usually rather mundane things a council deals with. They normally deal with it every three years or so, so that the consumer. The user is stuck with a rate for a few years without having it adjusted. This council, you can change it whenever you want, you're allowed. And what you might do is look at the previous three years of. Of surplus or deficit to help you determine the next three years of your charges. So you don't change it every year normally. Some could, so um. Since you asked. Uh whether or not it's worked for us. Every council meeting like this has worked for us.
I think the reason that that uh. That this motion came forward just due is due to the fact that that. When it seemed like when we passed the last bylaw at at nine twenty six or nine or. It was. It was kinda projected that that now we don't have to talk about this anymore. So it'll it'll just happen. And then every time we kinda wanted to talk about water bylaws, it it or water rates. Utility bylaws, it it got, well, no, it just moves forward. Then and that's why. Um I'm pretty sure this motion was put forward is to make sure that we actually get a chance to talk about. Utility rates and that and 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 not be not be said, no, we can't talk about that uh cuz it just happens. So. If if. I guess I'm looking for a guarantee that if a counselor says, hey, January first, I'd like to talk about water rates. That it can actually happen. Or or is it a fight to get it on on the agenda? I don't know. It's.
Counselor Chamsik.
I kinda like the idea of it, uh knowing that it's coming every year set time. I mean, obviously, we've had a a lot enough contention about this that um. I kinda like the idea.
Thank you. The main uh reason why I put this forward is because, of course, we are um seeing so many changes and what's happening within our budget. And how it's being um filled in. So we've got different scenarios that are happening and and what's going where and and this is a new. Situation where we're coming from uh. An overcharge as far as I'm concerned to where I'm believing this is more of a a decent charge. That maybe we have that opportunity to review. And that's why I I I put it forward. We it can definitely change. Um but I definitely would like to see this reviewed again in January of of twenty twenty six. Counselor Anderson.
I would move to amend the motion to February or March of of each year. Um I understand where you're coming from. I just think you need to be able to see the financials from the year previous. To know how much you subsidized prior to actually having that discussion. So. January, we know they're never compiled quite that quickly. I think February or March and leaving it a little bit broader. Gives administration a little bit more leeway to make sure that they have the numbers to bring forward. And are giving the council of the day the opportunity to discuss them. As more of a full conversation by having those numbers available that a little bit later in the year.
Did you want the amendment to be February or March, or do you want to specify a month? Any further, Counselor Hall?
This uh motion has come out of the blue without any advance notice to council. And without the advance input from administration, it doesn't even clearly fit under the agenda item. So I would move retable this to committee of the whole so that we can have a discussion and get admins input in advance so we can think about it. Rather than be surprised by it. To table to the next committee of the whole.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's a few motions that um have been made by yourself as well today that haven't been that have been on the table, but we can have that conversation. Um tabling. So we will start with that. It's uh no debate. It's a simple. Um majority. All those in favor to table?
Aye.
One, two, three, four. All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. I think if I get that right, yep. So on the question uh to complete a Water and Sewer Services Charge Bylaw Annual Review in January. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. You that's right. Pardon me. I'd forgotten about the amendment. There's a lot going on. It's okay. It's okay. The amendment would be for February or March. So we'll vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six and opposed. One, two, I'm sorry. Did you vote? You're oh, you're four. Okay, so that would be seven and two. So on the motion with the amended amendment to complete a Water and Service Charges Bylaw Annual Review in February or March. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Oppose? One, two, three. Alright, so that passes. The other motion that I had as we discussed several times today um was with regards to the Collington Local Improvement Tax uh Bylaw one dash dash zero two zero zero seven. I would like to float this motion and see where it goes.
It's a point of order. What agenda item were we on?
We are on the same uh Water and Sewers Charges and because we discussed the uh Water and Sewers Charges Bylaw includes the um. Forgiveness of the levy. Um it's part of this conversation. And so the motion that I would like to put on the floor is to direct administration to repeal the Collington Local Improvement Tax Bylaw one dash two zero zero seven. On January first twenty twenty six. Is there discussion? Counselor Capitania.
Uh thank you. Um I would uh like to speak to the fact that such an incredibly um. Big topic of conversation should actually be a conversation. And that it would be of respect to your colleagues and myself to have had that conversation at the table. Prior to it being. A motion to do it or not do it. Um I'm caught off guard. I don't have any indication from my community that they have any information. Um and or have any opportunity to ask questions. Uh in regards to it. And I've said before, when we had floated it, as you said, that I would like to have some public consultation. That has not come about. I'm not saying I don't agree with it, and I'm not saying I do, but you are. Basically surprising everyone with this idea of yours and not giving the community any input. And that I'm not okay with. Um whether it's amazing idea or not, it's a big change. And it is not something that I feel like I can go back to my community and say, well, I didn't know anything about it. Reeve Holland just put it on the floor. Is that what I'm supposed to say?
Well, I appreciate that. Um and and if I'll.
There's no conversation.
I'll just respond. Um we have talked about this over and over and over again. We have reports. In our agendas with regards to this. It is not something that is a surprise.
It could be a separate agenda item.
I'm sorry, I have the floor at the moment, please. I have the floor. And so this is not a surprise as at all. This has been discussed over and over and over again. We hear, we see it as a huge problem. Um we've presented here today as it being a huge problem. This has been talked about. I I don't even know for how many, how long. It's months, months in the committee of the whole. Um it's not a surprise at all, and we've had that conversation. Um so it's out there. I said once again, this is a council of nine. This can be a choice on how council chooses to deal with it. Um. It's not a surprise. As as far as I'm concerned, this has been coming for a long time. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Um as the local improvement levy was put in by bylaw. I don't actually know that a motion to direct administration to repeal is valid. Um I know in the previous times when we wanted to repeal bylaws, we have to do that by bylaw.
Yes.
So I. I don't think that the motion is valid. I think you would have to direct administration to prepare a bylaw. For the repealing and then that motion, that bylaw would have to land on our agenda. And pass three readings. So I sorry, but I just don't think that the current motion is valid.
I appreciate that. And repealing a bylaw is exactly that. A bylaw has to be done. That's why it was to direct administration. I would. Sorry if it's not a clear motion, but that can definitely be wordsmithed to create the repealing bylaw. Um to bring back to council for sure. That's part of of a repealing a bylaw. That is um what has to happen is a bylaw needs to be done to repeal that. So it would definitely come back to this table.
So we've heard that this isn't a surprise. I'm just have two questions, but could you show me in the agenda where this has been identified so we could have been prepared with our thinking?
We discussed it as part of the Water and Sewer Charges Bylaw. It's been discussed several times over this. We've had the conversation here today. Um and therefore, because it causes so many issues. Um it was, as far as I'm concerned, something that is very valid to bring forward at this time.
So we um. Not that long ago, we had a robust debate about public consultation on a completely unrelated issue, but arguably one that had far less impact. On the municipality financially or the number of residents than what we're talking about right now. And it's curious that we had this huge passion for public consultation then and not a whisper of it on this more significant issue. For me, I don't like this is an ambush motion that has come out of the blue and without admins input in advance. I really don't understand. Why we don't have the respect for council to submit this through an RFD. Uh we've been previously told by admin that there are precedent setting issues that arise. By repealing local improvement levies or backing out of them. I like, we're we're being asked to make a knee jerk decision without having had a specific discussion on the issue. And I just, I don't think it's the right process. We can do better than this. If this is really a concern, put it in an RFD through a committee of the whole and let's have a conversation. And get admins clear and specific input in the moment.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Gerlock, and then Counselor Cromwell.
As much as I agree with the intent of the motion, I have to agree that it it should be discussed further. It should be brought up. Maybe as a notice of motion for for a a future meeting. But uh. It does not do any harm to go through the process uh. Because it's this, it's pretty fine. If we vote on this today, that means it's going to be done January first.
It wouldn't be done January first because to repeal a bylaw, you do need the bylaw to repeal it. Therefore, a repealing bylaw would come forward to council. If you would like to make an amendment, by all means to forward this to uh a. Committee of the whole meeting to bring the reports back that we've ha- already had through the committee of the whole, by all means, please do.
Okay, I would make a motion to that effective.
Okay.
Or is that, is there an emotion on the table floor right now?
For the ame- for the amendment to, we can make this a friendly amendment to forward this motion or this uh requesting of the repealing. Of a bylaw to the committee of the whole.
Yes.
Pardon me? Do you want to do that as, okay? So if we want to read this, if we're. If I'm wordsmithing this properly to direct administration to repeal and will if repealing means a repealing bylaw. Okay. To direct administration to repeal the Collington Local Improvement Tax Bylaw one dash two zero zero seven through. A repealing bylaw effective January first twenty twenty six to be discussed at the committee of the whole. It doesn't have to be the May, it could be June cuz we've got time. Is that satisfactory for everyone? Does that work? Tammy, did you get all that? Okay. So is everybody clear on this one, Counselor Capitania?
Um it I I'm sorry, but it it doesn't, it's not clear for me. The first part of the sentence is not necessary. If you want to. Make a motion to direct administration to create a bylaw to repeal. The tax improvement levy to be discussed at committee of the whole, I'm okay with that. But the first part, it's it. Does not add to the motion.
I guess it was just to make it clear that a repealing bylaw is required.
Yes, so just a motion that would say direct administration to create a a bylaw to repeal. Not direct administration to repeal by creating a bylaw.
Repealing is um required by a bylaw. Yeah, just to create.
Anybody else understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying, and I guess.
You can't direct administration to repeal something, so take the first part out and I'll vote for it.
Did, okay. So how do we, how would you like this to be said? So you want to have administration to bring. To the committee of the whole, a future committee of the whole meeting to repeal through a repealing bylaw?
Not to repeal. To create a bylaw to repeal. No, it's not the same thing at all.
To repeal a bylaw, you need a.
Yeah, they are not repealing it. We have to look at it. We have to talk about it. We have to vote on it. So they're not repealing anything. They're gonna create a bylaw to repeal.
You do need to create a bylaw to repeal, so that's a given.
So you cannot direct administration to repeal something. Until you've done the work first. So we're just asking them to create the bylaw that would repeal it. You don't have to say repeal twice in the motion.
Okay. If this is what will get us moving forward, for sure. So Tammy, I think we're we're going to be to direct administration to create a repealing bylaw. Regarding the Collington Local Improvement Tax Bylaw one dash two zero zero seven to be presented at a future committee of the whole meeting.
Perfect.
Alright.
That I can go with. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is everybody ready? All those in favor?
Hear the motion, please, in in full one more time now that.
I don't know if I can cuz I didn't write it down. Tammy, did you get it all?
Bits. I got bits. So moved by Chair Holland to direct administration to create a repealing bylaw. To repeal the Collington Local Tax Bylaw. Presented at an upcoming committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, so I to direct administration to create a repealing bylaw regarding the Collington. Local Improvement Tax Bylaw one dash two zero zero seven. At a future committee of the whole meeting for discussion. Hey, we're good. Everybody good? Alright, we're ready for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight and opposed. One, eight and one. Thank you.
Can I recommend a ten minute reset for everybody?
Thank you. So that's at one forty eight. We'll we'll return at two PM. Thank you. So that's at one forty eight. We'll we'll return at two PM. Counselor Capitan, are you are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we're just uh, just a couple more minutes um, and we'll be coming back in. I think everybody's pretty much ready to go, so I just wanted to make sure you were back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome back, everybody. Um, we are currently at uh, bylaw section of our agenda, six point two, bylaw zero one one dash twenty twenty five. The tax rate, um. I believe the recommendation here in the report is to pass first reading of bylaw zero one one dash twenty twenty five uh, tax rate bylaw as presented. And to bring bylaw zero one one dash twenty twenty five tax rate bylaw to the May thirteen twenty twenty five regular council meeting for second and third readings would 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 administration? Okay, first of all, that Counselor Cromwell would like to own that um, motion. Would administration like to weigh in on this report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. So before you is a draft bylaw. It was discussed on April fifteenth when council discussed the different scenarios. So this bylaw reflects scenario number two as as directed by council. Uh, we expect there might be some slight changes as April eighteenth was a deadline for anybody who received the the farm um, property letters and they still need to submit the declarations. So we think there might be some changes. So that's why today we're only asking first first reading. And on May thirteenth, we are hoping that council will pass second and third readings to allow us some time to prepare the tax notices and have them mailed out by the end of the month of May.
Thank you very much for that. Is there anyone who would like, Counselor Anderson?
Just as a matter of procedure, I think that it's a misstep to pass even first reading of the tax rate bylaw until we've discussed the budget. So I would move to table this item until after the budget on our agenda package.
Is everyone in agreeance to shift this item to after seven point two? It looks like we don't have opposition. There's no one opposed. I don't think we need a motion for that. Do we need a motion?
I was going to ask, Madam Chair, is it an actual motion or not?
Well, I was just, I was just going to say, do we require motion to shift this down?
Um, if you want to follow proper procedure, it'd be a tabling motion.
Sounds good. Then that's what the tabling motion would be to table six point two to come after seven point two in our agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
I see no oppose, so we will move that down here. We will move on to seven point one. Page seventy, pardon me. Six point two goes after seven point two. So we will go to seven point one, which is the twenty twenty four reserve allocation on page seventy four. The recommendation here is that council approve the twenty twenty four recommended reserve transfers as follows. Seven hundred ninety five thousand to the reclamation operating reserve, forty three thousand to the landfill operating reserve, one hundred thousand to the general operating reserve, two hundred thousand to the common services operating reserve, one hundred thousand to the waste management operating reserve, and a hundred and fifty thousand to the public workshop capital reserve. And that council approved the transfer of three million eighty five thousand five hundred eighty five dollars surplus to general operating reserve for the purpose of assessment complaints slash appeals contingency. Would administration like to weigh in on this? Report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. So these reserves have already been incorporated into our financial statements. And and as CO Beck had mentioned, we will be bringing forward a draft uh, reserves policy. And at that time, council can move reserves around um, and and find the the place that they would prefer to have them. For now, this is, these are our recommendations to close off our twenty twenty four books.
Thank you very much, Counselor Chamsik. Um, I can move it along for a discussion. Okay, she would like, Counsel Chamsik would like to move that recommended motion. Is there any discussion at the council table, Counselor Hall?
Um, I I'm seeking clarification. Are these over and above what we've already budgeted? Or is this in place of what we budgeted last year?
To the chair, this is over and above. So these were um, some of the projects that we, some of the savings that we made throughout the year or some projects that were deferred. So we decided to move them to reserve so we can utilize it in the next year by pulling them through the reserves.
Just and I only because the sheet on page seventy six doesn't have the January one balances. I couldn't tell if those funds were in there. Second comment is, uh, I was looking at our financial statements, which are on page twenty four of your agenda, and I don't see any reserves with those titles. Is that going to be a problem? Given that the accountant has said these are the names of reserves we have.
To the chair, yeah, I do see some um difference in naming conventions, but uh, by metrics. I will actually get that changed because even you asked about reclamation reserve earlier when Jeff was presenting, and he didn't know which one it was. It's showing up as equipment under page one eighty four of the agenda package uh, under operating, but it should be changed to just say common services. Which um, which shows all the other reserves. So under common services, we have common services, generals, no clearing reserve, reclamation reserve, and landfill reserve, which you can see on page seventy six. It kind of breaks it all down for you there. So if you add all four of them up, that should tally up to the three point six nine three million seen on page one eighty four as equipment reserve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to discuss? Alrighty, so on the recommended motion by Counselor Chamsik, we are ready for the question. All those in favor? No opposed, so that will be nine and oh. Thank you. Next item we have is seven point two, which is our twenty twenty five operating and capital budget on page seventy seven of your agenda package. The recommendation here is that council approves the twenty twenty five operating and cap- capital budget uh, as presented. Sir, Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Um. I'm sorry, did you want to find somebody to put a motion on the table before I ask, or am I good to ask? Go ahead. Okay. Uh, administration's made some changes, obviously, to include the water subsidization now. And I'm kind of wondering why we're now taking two hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of the fire services fleet replacement as the recommendation versus paying the taxation portion of the two bridge files that are carryover projects? Just because we would have taxed for those, we just put that money into reserves thirty seconds ago. Would it not make sense to spend those out of reserves? And fire services still be out of taxation. So we're still building the fire services reserve rather than now taking out of it.
I'm happy to answer that, Madam Chair. Uh, that was my recommendation. So at interim budget, all the fire apparatus was to come from reserve, all of it. And so we changed it during discussion um, and to have it all out of taxation. Now, due to a few changes, we needed to find something that we had to reel back. We had to find a bit of room in our budget because we're not allowed to run a deficit. So we added some of the fire apparatus back from reserve. It's still seven hundred thousand better than it was at the interim budget passed in December. So most of the reserve is left on intact, and so about seven hundred thousand of the apparatus is still from levy. Uh, we could have, you're right. It could have been any one of many scenarios. That's just one we picked. And that's that's the reasoning.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Um, I would like to see that amendment made. Just when we're justifying it to the public, to me, it's easier to justify, okay, we carried these projects forward. We had some left in twenty twenty four. We put it into reserves. Now we're taking it back out to use it for the projects as intended versus dipping into our fire services um, reserve that we're trying to build up because we know that the fire services are going to need. So um, I just think that that's more palpable and easier to communicate to the residents. And shows that we're, we really are trying to make sure that we're spending the right dollars in the right places.
So the amendment that you're looking for, if we could have you word the amendment so that Tammy can um, record that, please, that would be great.
But just, Madam Chair, I mean, are you trying to make a specific uh, motion to amend the budget to include, to incorporate that? Okay, Madam Chair, it's incorporated in the budget document. So if council were to adopt the new budget, it's in there. So we don't need a separate motions for all these changes. It's in there. So all these, we just itemized the changes so you know about them. They're all in the budget document.
And when the motion reads as presented, it is already in an amended document. So the presented document is amended, if I'm if I'm reading that correctly.
That is correct. They're incorporated in this budget.
But this amendment is not.
No, it is. As far as I can see, it is.
It is.
Because our capital projects on page one fifty one lists taxation being spent for a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars for Bridgefile seventy seven four ten and Bridgefile oh nine nine three six. One five one, it's.
The one that's highlighted? The item that's highlighted?
So it's just a small amendment, but then we can the motion essentially would be to adopt as amended versus as presented.
But the amendment is in the document.
No.
That's what I'm seeing. Am I not seeing that? Oh.
Madam Chair, it's incorporated.
I I see that as well. I I'm seeing it, yeah. Would you like it to be shown to you, like where it is? I see it on page one fifty one. The following revision was made to the capital budget, two hundred twenty thousand reclaimed fire services fleet replacement from taxation to reserves. It says on, I don't know, right there where it's highlighted on page one fifty one, it shows the two hundred and twenty thousand fire reserves. So I I guess I'm I'm not seeing what I'm seeing it, so I don't know what you're not seeing.
So the current budget document indicates exactly as shown on the admin report. And I'm requesting it to be amended so that the full fire replacement of ten years is funded from taxation. And the two bridge files that are carryover projects above are from reserves. So small notation difference. But that's what I'd ask for.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend. That's what it is. It's so that a hundred percent of the fire purchases are back from levy and the two hundred twenty thousand we take from reserve for bridge repairs? Is that the motion?
Is that what you'd like?
Yes, and I will make that a formal motion or um. Yeah, I can make that a formal motion so that.
Yeah, please go ahead and make that a formal motion so that Tammy can record it accordingly. Um, and we can take the time because we did not, we only did a recommendation. I only read the recommendations. We don't have the motion on the floor yet.
And we know, I know, I I understand that administration was trying to stop us from making ten. And we know, I know, I understand that administration was trying to stop us from making ten motions to amend the budget. That's why I was kind of holding back and saying, or we can just make a motion at the end to adopt as amended.
So, Madam, Madam Chair, I'm going to ask council, do you, do you mind which bridge project you are changing to be a bit from reserve and, and takes from levy? Like, if no one cares, then I would suggest that we reduce the Collington Bridge replacement. It was, it's proposed in this budget as one hundred percent from levy. What we would do is reduce the two point two five oh by two hundred and twenty. And then we would add two twenty to come from reserve. That's all we would do, Madam Chair. So it would, on page one fifty-one, Collington Bridge would be two million zero zero zero-three-zero, zero-zero-zero from taxation and two hundred twenty thousand from reserve and up above the equipment, the highlighted fleet replacement for ten years. So that would be nine twenty-eight-five from taxation. Is that correct? And zero from reserve.
And we'll get a new document piece, right? Does everybody understand what's happening here? Do we have any other discussion on this budget? Either the capital or the operating? Council Hall?
Under line twenty-seven fifty-five, I guess, I just wonder, we're still, I mean, these are small numbers, but we're still showing five thousand dollar contribution to three teen centers. That's my understanding, one of those teen centers is stopped business. So can we, should we still be budgeting for that when they're no longer doing that thing?
I think at this point, if I, if I may, we need to get confirmation confirmed before we make any changes. And it's easier to, we can amend the budget, budgets are amendable. So we can actually deal with that when we get confirmation about these teen centers that we're hearing about.
I'm just concerned that we'll send a check to something that doesn't, isn't providing the service.
I think that administration understands that there is a concern and that they are on top of that. Go ahead, please.
Madam Chair, we did call the Wandering River Teen Center and they said they might be losing the building, but they're still planning on operating.
I'm sorry. Go, go ahead, Council Cromwell.
Did we not talk about in this room that that building was owned by us and was supposed to be part of our asset management review due to the state of that building? That was very clearly on, on the list that we added on when we were talking about our, our building inventory, that that building was added on to it. Because that was a big point of discussion. So I'm just a little bit confused, am I the only one that recalls that?
Make you feel better, Council Cromwell, I do seem to recall that being on our asset management list. I do too. This, this five thousand, is that for the building or is that for the teen center?
Well, that's for their operating
Operating costs.
But just that, that bit of information we're just given makes my hair kind of fall out.
So are we all clear that the county owns the building and the five thousand is for the operating for of the group, of the teen center group? I don't know the name of the group.
Plamondon Wander River Community Resource Society. I think we need to have administration look into ownership of land and building because we are now talking different than we were talking before. So if they are losing that building, I would like to know to who, why, and how.
Well, I, I am hoping that this budget line stays in play until we get this confirmation, Council Gerlock.
I think it is better to leave it in the budget than take it out. If it no longer functions, then there'll be five thousand dollars left in the budget.
Correct, I, I agree with you.
It probably highlights a weakness in the process though, where any of the groups that we send money to, we should ask for some kind of follow-up reporting to make sure that they've spent it on what it was intended to just to close the loop. I mean, we're handing out somebody else's money and as we work to tighten up process, if you want the check this year, you need to demonstrate you used it properly last year. As, as a future discussion.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that that would be a policy-type discussion and that's not for this moment. Is there anyone else who would like to weigh in? Council Anderson?
Regarding the find the line here, assist schools and bus costs, Policy twenty-six thirteen, we've budgeted fifteen thousand. Are we sure that's adequate to meet the needs of our local schools? I mean, I haven't seen the data yet, but I have a feeling that the estimate that Council Chamsik was able to provide via email yesterday is significantly closer to the actual cost that our schools are facing. And I want to make sure that that program doesn't get cut in the future because it's really important. And I think that's the one way that we've kind of maintained that uniformity amongst all of our rural schools is by helping to foot the bill for them to come in and swim at our facility.
Thank you, Council Chamsik, and then Council Gerlock.
I hundred percent agree with that. I mean, you know, these are children, we're around an abundance of Great Lakes and I think it's a great way to serve our taxpayers.
Thank you, Council Gerlock.
Yes, that program was put in thirty-plus years ago because just of the fact that the school said they couldn't afford the bus to the, to the swim program. And actually Boyle was choosing to go to Blackavish. And so that was when it was put in to encourage people. No use to subsidize the pool and then not use it. Or not have our people support it. So that's a good program, needs to be supported.
Thank you, I agree that it needs to be supported. At this time though, there's more research I think that needs to happen. And I don't think we can put a dollar on that until we get that research back. And of course, budgets are amendable. So we can always, as we have seen throughout our term, come back if more money is required or less money is, is being spent. So I would hazard to leave it as it sits until we get that information coming forward. Are there any other? Are we ready for the question, folks? No, Council Minz?
I just got one question. Page one fifteen sixty-two of the report. The road maintenance and requisition driven budget, it goes from five-thirty to three-ten. Did that, did money get moved? Budget was at five-thirty and now it's down to three-ten? Did that money go someplace else or?
To the chair, sorry, what page exactly?
Uh, one fifteen. Page one. Where is it at?
I'll find it, I'll come back to it.
We'll give you some time. Are you okay? Call a question? Is anybody else? Because if we're ready to go. Well, I'm sorry.
Right, did anyone, everyone stop talking?
No, and I apologize, I thought my mic was on. So the motion that is on the floor is that council approved the twenty twenty-five operating and capital budget as amended. And that is Council Minz's motion and Council Gerlock would like to speak.
What kind of money is there in there for contingencies, things that just kind of show up? That because quite often we get into something and we say, well, it's not budgeted, it's not budgeted, things we should do, but it's just not budgeted. Is there sort of a slush fund?
I wouldn't call, Madam Chair, I wouldn't call a slush fund. Council very specifically has been strategic about establishing reserves. So as new projects come in after budget, council still has flexibility to look at them and address them. We'd have to find a funding source other than taxation. We just can't do it from taxation. Sometimes maybe one project has been dropped later in the year. So we've got a bit of extra there, but you've also got reserves. So I wouldn't call it a slush fund, I'd call it reserves.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready for the question because I'm putting it. Are we ready to go, folks? I'm sure there's no other discussion. So where we're at is that council approves the twenty twenty-five operating and capital budget as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That would be seven and two. Thank you, folks, we're going to jump backwards now. So six point two was brought brought to be discussed after seven point two. Six point two is our bylaw, zero-zero-one, twenty-twenty-five, the tax rate bylaw. And we've had that conversation from administration, thank you very much, unless there's any addition to what you've already said. The recommendation is to go to pass, to pass the first reading of bylaw zero-one-one, twenty-twenty-five tax rate bylaw as presented and to bring bylaw zero-one-one twenty-twenty-five tax rate bylaw to the May thirteen regular council meeting for second and third readings. Are we ready or is there a discussion? Council Wallack?
With the new adjustment to the budget, with the increase of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, is that, are we still going to balance out at this tax rate?
To the chair, that is correct. We still will have about a contribution to reserve of five hundred dollars going in. Four hundred forty-eight, yeah.
Sorry, to me, that's way too close to yeah, I don't, I don't think we should be dipping into reserves or anything operational.
It's, it's first reading, so there is definitely time to bring some of that information back that we're looking at. Oh, believe me, I was going to try and float the boat of lowering minimum tax, but I'm not doing that today. Council, Council Hall?
On the, the balancing that you're talking about, does that include the contributions to reserves that we plan for, like the fire services and the gravel pit reclamation, the annual installments?
To the chair, that's correct, they're already incorporated into it. Okay.
I have one question procedurally, when we go forward with the first reading, the next item to bring to bylaw would be a motion, if I'm not mistaken. And I just wanted to double-check that, CAO. The recommendation is to pass first reading, which is different than a motion. And the motion for me would be to bring the bylaw zero-one-one, that would be two separate items. Thank you very much.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, so if we're finished with all conversation and discussion, we will start with the first reading. Who would like to, Council Cromwell would like to pass first reading of bylaw zero-one-one dash twenty-twenty-five tax rate bylaw as presented. No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three, four, five, six, seven, and opposed? Two, so that would be seven and two. First reading is passed, the motion, who wants to own it? Council Gerlock? Would you like to own this motion? All right, I'm going to read it and you can decide. To bring bylaw zero-one-one, twenty-twenty-five tax rate bylaw to the May thirteen, twenty-twenty-five regular council meeting for second and third readings. That's Council Gerlock's. All right, is there any discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
And it doesn't appear that there are any opposed? Perfect, we are moving on. Let's get organized here, we're going to seven point three, oh no, pardon me, seven point four. The fire invoice presentation, item four point one that we talked about earlier today. And that is on page one fifty-eight of your agenda. And what we have here is a recommendation to receive the delegation for information and to direct administration to gather further information and present it at an upcoming county council meeting. Council Chamsik, you would like to, she would like to put that motion forward as recommended? Is there a further conversation? Council Wallack?
What kind of information are we looking for? Like the breakdown of the bill is, or I just think I
Madam Chair, we've probably tried to address some of the questions he had and the irregular irregularities that he thinks appear from this instance. So we would clarify some things around the website. I think we've got an answer for that. The absolute, he said that the chief is working on a different rate. We would, we would look at that. So we would, we would ask for a full report from Fire Chief Shalapay.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions, Council Anderson?
I did have one question, there is an invoice included in our agenda package from the county to them for the fire services. Do we usually submit or send out just this invoice or is there a breakdown that also accompanies?
Madam Chair, I can't answer that, it'll be included in that report.
Thank you. Are we ready for the question, folks, and who would like to own this motion? Council Gerlock? Oh, cut, sorry, Council Chamsik? Council Chamsik said to receive the delegation for information and to direct administration to gather further information and present it at an upcoming county council meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? One, that's eight and one. Until it's getting later in the day. Seven point five. We have the Matrix Group LLP, the audited financial statements from the delegation, item four point two. The recommendation here is that council approve the twenty twenty-four annual financial statements prepared by Matrix Group LLP, chartered professional accountants as presented. Would administration like to speak on the report?
We have nothing more to add, thank you.
Thank you so much. Council Anderson?
I'm with the recommended motion. I had added this to the agenda just in case we had questions following. And I think Mr. Allison, Alston was able to answer most of our questions in closed sessions.
Thank you, I agree. Is there anyone else? All right, if we're ready for the question, Council Anderson would like that council approve the twenty twenty-four annual financial statements prepared by Matrix Group LLP, chartered professional accountants as presented. We're ready, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? That was nine and oh, thank you. Alrighty, we are moving to item eight point one, the community event calendars on page one ninety-two of your package. I have several items on here that I know will take up a lot of council's time. So I would just like to be able to forward them to Tammy afterwards. And if I may, I'll, I'll just run through some of these really quick as some are coming up this weekend. The April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, there's the Helping Horses Healing Society Garage Sale at the Athabasca Train Station from noon to five. It is a fundraiser there. April twenty-sixth, Amber Valley Community Hall is having their chicken supper. It is an extremely delicious meal that is from five to seven on Saturday. And where else we've not just got here, we got the May fifth is Red Dress Day. And the Athabasca Native Friendship Center will be hosting an event on forty-nine, forty-nine nineteen fifty-third street at eleven thirty to two P M. On May the ninth, the soup and bannock from the Native Friendship Center will be canceled as they are hosting a Mother's Day tea at eleven thirty until two. The thirteenth of May is the Road to Hope. They're having their AGM at seven P M at the Grassland Community Hall. On May the fourteenth, Aspen View is doing their robotics tournament. And this is an item that was actually in our agenda, looking for if the county has anybody that would like to step up to be on the judging panel. So if that is something that somebody is interested in, please let and I think, I believe it's Mrs. Cars Marsh Chuck's letter who was asking for that information. Of course, May nineteenth was Victoria Day, we can't forget the long weekend. June fourteenth is the tentative Athabasca Landing Trail cleanup date. And June twentieth is the tentative Athabasca Landing Trail, northern half of the tour. That's what I have, does anybody else have anything, Council Chamsik?
June thirtieth, the Grassland Excitement meeting, general meeting. And just to throw something in there, June third is also the parent advisory and school council meeting for Grassland School.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, Council Chamsik, would you All right, Counselor Chamsik, would you like to move that we receive the meeting calendars as amended? All those in favor? And I believe Counselor Capitanic is now gone. She left, okay. So that would be seven, I know, I believe there was no opposed. All right. We're moving to eight point two, the meeting calendars, uh, May and June. That's on page two hundred of your agenda package. Go ahead, Counselor Minz.
Uh, May first uh. I M C pre-meeting here at the office, nine A M. Um, May fifth, the Aspen Regional Water Service Commission Workshop, Town Office at nine thirty A M.
That's all you got, okay? Um, I'll weigh in as well. Um, on May first, there's also a trails meeting at ten thirty. There is another trails meeting at ten thirty on May the ninth. On May the seventeenth, we have the Rochester School Farewell. After a hundred and nine years, that will be taking place uh one P M to seven P M. There is at three P M a memories celebration. And on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is the Buffalo Lake May Tea Rodeo um that I have been invited to. Attend, and I'm wondering if council, and this would of course require a weigh-in from Director Wilkinson. If the, it's possible to move the M P C meeting from the twenty-seventh to the twenty-ninth. Before the council meeting at nine fifteen. But I've been asked that we would. Is that something we can check with?
We'd be happy to check.
Okay, thank you. I think so. Oh, we have um, pardon me, in June. Is the um tentative date for the Athabasca Landing Trail Northern Portion Tour. Hey, what day, sorry, June? January twen- or June twentieth. Right. Um, okay, in May, um, just a slight error, the eighth and ninth is the F C S S conference. Um, and for June, the thirteenth is a celebrating Rural Women's Conference meeting. Um, the seventeenth is the Village of Boyle Library meeting, the nineteenth is the Alice B. Donahue. Meeting, and of course I had the ask if uh M P C on the twenty-fourth could move to the twenty-sixth as well. For you to check into Mister C A O.
So that's both for, for May um and June. M P C meetings to move just before the county council meeting, so we'll get confirmation on that. Do you have anything for, for your?
Oh, I overheard that. That's the one I was gonna change.
As well, Counselor Anderson?
June sixteenth. Is a arms meeting.
And, and I missed one there. Uh, May twenty-first is a Island Lake Waterline Advisory Meeting, nine A M, teams.
Um, F C M from May twenty-ninth to June first.
That's the conference in Ottawa? The F C M conference is in Ottawa, okay? To June first. Okay. Counselor Chamsik?
And I must have missed it, uh, June ninth, it should also be the F C S S uh meeting as well.
Okay. What did he say?
Conference was on June ninth?
No, it should be a meeting on June ninth. Conver- the conference is May.
May?
Midnight.
Oh, May, okay.
Counselor Minz?
One thing I was gonna ask, uh. Is it Northern Lakes College?
Northern, Northern Lakes.
Yeah, when, when is that, June sixth, you said?
Oh, yes, that is June sixth, you're correct. Um, the convoy's there, Slave Lake.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's there, yeah, June sixth. As well as the A U convocation is June fifth and sixth. So I'll, I'll, I'll sit with Tammy and go through all of the ones that I have for sure.
All right, anybody else? Counselor Wall?
Just as um, there's gonna be a couple of us gone to F C M on the twenty-ninth, just wondering if there's an appetite to move. The council meeting to the fifth of June.
June fifth is the A U convocation.
Are you speaking personally?
Yes, I'm expected to be there for both days. Is there another date that? Go ahead.
We could uh. If we're efficient and we work well, we could back-to-back make a full day on the twenty-seventh.
We're gone.
Then we have the multiplex meeting conflicting as well. And then, of course, the twenty-eighth is the I M C meeting. So. Are we leaving it where it sits?
We may not do the fourth.
The Wednesday, the fourth? That would be up to C A O if he's um. If, if it's okay to move the council meeting from May twenty-ninth to June fourth. Because that also then puts us with a council meeting following June tenth.
Yeah, I, Madam Chair, I have no, no idea why that would be a problem.
You'd be okay with it?
Oh, yeah, you know what? The only thing, I'll just, let's say for sure, but maybe there's some delegations that have already asked for a certain date, that's all. And I don't know that.
Okay, so I'm, is it something we can look at, at May thir- on May thirteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. So we will look at that at a later date. We will confirm all of these things. So who would like to pass this amended calendars? Counselor Minz would like to put the motion forward to. Accept our calendars as amended. All those in favor? And I see no opposed, so that's eight and oh. And if we can move on to reports, I believe we are at ten point one W. The Island Lake Waterline Advisory Committee, Counselor Hall, you asked for that to be put on?
Uh, strictly to provide an update that there was a advisory committee meeting yesterday. And they're working on the alignment, uh, finalization with the goal of having it all settled by the end of May. They uh have identified some, the consultant has identified, or project manager. Has identified some potential savings, also a couple of areas where we may see overruns. Um, there's a public engagement planned for, um, discussed in early stages for the summer, but the date is still to be determined. And um, it's certainly clear from the discussion that the potential for overruns is a very deep concern for the summer villages.
Thank you. Is there, Counselor Gerlock?
Through the chair, is there any discussion as to how long the build would take and estimated time and when it could possibly begin?
It's probably better directed to the C A O, I don't remember that.
Um, yeah, it wouldn't be finished before probably the end of twenty twenty-seven, that's for sure. So um, it's a big project and there's a bunch of environmental approvals to. To obtain first before we could do something.
So Christmas is out.
I'm sorry?
Done by Christmas is out.
Yeah, that's right.
Alrighty, does anybody else have any questions? Thank you for your report. I think at this point, we are completed most of our agenda except for our closed session item twelve point one. So if I could have a motion to go into close, please, Counselor Cromwell would like to move that we go into closed session at. Two forty. Thanks, Cole. Opposed, so that's eight and oh, we are officially enclosed. Thank you. Alrighty, thank you so much. Um, welcome back, everybody. We are finished our closed session. We have a couple of motions. That have come out of that closed session. Uh, I will go ahead and read those and pass these along to you when we're done. Uh, Counselor Cromwell. Would like to move that council reconsider C C two five one four seven, which is move, which is motion to. Um, we move by Reeve Holland, pardon me, that council adopt level A of the pay grid. As presented in closed and further to advance the C A O to step five retroactive to January one twenty twenty-five. That is the reconsideration motion. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Thank you, no opposed, so that's eight and oh. The last motion of the day, Counselor Gerlock would like to move that council adopt level A of the pay grid as presented in closed. And further to advance C A O to step, C A O to step six, retroactive to January one twenty twenty-five. That's right. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And I don't see any opposed, that is eight and oh. And I think we did it, folks. Long day. We will adjourn this meeting at three oh four.